Call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, September 19th, 2019. Can I have the roll call, please?
Rodriguez, Newton.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Fragoso.
Here.
Kirline.
Here.
Gonzalez Parver. Here. And Chair Swift.
Here. Okay, approval of the agenda. We have a motion for a discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So I'm going to read the meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the commission has responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. And we now have public comments on non-agenda items, and I'm going to read the information on that. Anyone wishing to address the commission on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission may do so now. Please state the matter on which you wish to speak. Matters not appearing on the commission's agenda will not receive action at this meeting, but may be referred to staff for a future meeting. Presentations will be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established by the commission chair. Persons are not required to give their name or address, but it is helpful for speakers to state their name for the record and whether or not they are a Fairfax resident in order that the secretary may identify them. Do we have anyone wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. We have no items on the consent calendar, so we're going to go to public hearing items now. Item 1, 402 Scenic Road. Can I have the staff report, please?
Yes. So the applicants are applying for a use permit, a design review permit, a parking variance, and minimum rear and combined front rear setback variances to legalize a lower-floor bedroom expansion, a storage area underneath the parking structure, and to add a new second full bathroom on the lower floor, and to construct a new deck off the lower floor that would maintain a minimum rear setback of only six feet instead of the required 12 feet. The project requires the approval of the following discretionary permits. It requires a use permit because the parcel size does not meet the minimum requirements based on the parcel's 58 percent slope. The conversion of a portion of the lower enclosed subfloor area to a master bedroom and bathroom, and construction of an interior and exterior western stairways will not change the single-family residential character of the site, and the resulting house is similar in size to other residences on similar-sized properties in the immediate neighborhood. Therefore, staff believes the findings for the use permit can be made. It also requires a parking variance. Because the project constitutes a 50 percent remodel, it requires a design review -- I'm sorry, requires a parking variance. The code says that when you do a 50 percent remodel, you're supposed to either provide the minimum parking required by the code, or you're supposed to apply for and obtain a parking variance from the planning commission. Staff has visited the site and taken measurements of the driveway area in front of the carport, and we believe that the applicants can provide the required three parking spaces if the commission is able to make findings to grant a variance for two of the spaces to be compact stalls. And compact stalls are eight feet by 16 feet in size instead of nine by 19 feet in size. It also would require a variance because the third guest stall would be in tandem with both the parking spaces, while the code currently only allows the guest parking space to be in tandem with one of the spaces on the site. We believe the findings can be made for that variance as well. The lot is a very odd -- I shouldn't say odd. It's an unusual shape. It's very elongated and triangular, and what that does is it results in the lot not being very deep. And so the house itself that's there now doesn't meet the current requirements. I think I've told you guys before that in 1973, the town decided to change -- they adopted a slope ordinance, and they changed all their setback regulations, increasing them significantly. And it resulted in probably 85 to 90 percent of their houses no longer complying with the current regulations. Makes it very difficult for a lot of the properties to do any kind of improvements without building into the required setbacks. So based on the irregular shape, slope, and size, we believe the findings can be made for the requested front minimum rear and the combined front and rear setbacks. The one thing that we were unable to make findings for is the property already has a large 332-square-foot upper deck that provides a substantial amount of usable outdoor space for the property, and that was granted a variance in 2014 by the Planning Commission because at that point, it really -- the property had one small deck, and there really wasn't much usable outdoor space. But we're unable to make findings for a second 275-square-foot lower deck because that seems excessive to staff. So we've included a condition in the proposed resolution recommending approval of the project that the plans submitted for the building permit be modified to only include a small access deck off the rear of the property. It would provide access to and from the lower bedroom in case of an emergency, and it would provide access to the storage area that the applicants are requesting approval for. We can make the findings for the requested rear and combined front rear setback. The project also requires design review because it's a 50 percent remodel, and the proposed door to the storage room beneath the carport, the sliding door to the proposed lower bedroom, additional windows to the lower bedroom, and proposed bathroom, and the proposed rear deck will add articulation to the exterior design of this structure. The modifications will not significantly alter the design of the building, and will not result in a structure that is out of character with the neighborhood. Therefore, we believe the proposed project complies with the design review criteria contained in the town code. Therefore, we're recommending that you approve the project. Approve Application 19-09 by adopting Resolution 2019-10, which sets forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval. And I did have a couple corrections to the resolution. If you could turn to page 5, number 13. It should read, "Any exterior lighting plan shall be submitted with the building permit application, and any new exterior lighting shall use dark sky compliant features," et cetera, et cetera. So that got a little bit wonky. And then on page 7, number 31. I did not complete the sentence, and it should read, "The proposed 275-square-foot rear deck and exterior shower shall be replaced by an approximately 189-square-foot deck accessing the storage room only and providing an access and egress deck for the lower bedroom that meets only the minimum requirements required by the building code for width." And that would conclude our report.
Question through the chair. What is that minimum width requirement on the lower deck? It doesn't say.
I would ask Laura that. I know -- I think it's four, is it three? I think it's four feet for a deck.
A landing?
A landing has to be three feet, but I think four feet would seem reasonable.
For a deck.
So that would be the deck in front of the bedroom, the lower bedroom doors, right? It would be four feet from the edge of the doors.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a question. The REZO calls for adoption of plans. The resolution calls for adoption of the plans, but I didn't see in these plans the 189-square-foot deck.
No, because they haven't -- they're proposing a 275-square-foot deck, so that's what's showing up on the plans.
Right. Well, okay, so there's...
So if I forgot to say "as modified," you're going to need to do that. I thought I put it under the first condition.
I think it's in there.
Yeah, so number one on page three.
So is there another set of plans, then, that shows the deck?
No, we're asking that they submit -- so everything's fine except the rear deck, and we want them to show us that it's a minimum four-foot wide deck at the building permit stage.
Right, okay.
And we would review that. Staff would review that.
Okay, thanks.
I believe if you look at the first whereas clause on page three, there's reference to modifying the reduced deck. But on page eight, there's also -- I mean, on page four, there's also a reference in paragraph eight to not modifying the plans. We might want to look at that when we get there. I'd like to ask a few questions, if I may. I was confused. Looking at the table in the staff report on the setbacks. The front setback, under proposed, says no change. Rear setback says no change. Combined front rear setback says no change.
So because the upper deck is already in setback further than this proposed deck, the setbacks are not changing. The lower deck will not extend out further than the existing deck, so the rear setback is not changing.
If we adopt the proposal as -- with the modified deck plans?
Well, actually, with the 275-square-foot deck, I think the lower deck is still one foot shorter than the upper deck. Two? Two feet.
Okay. Oh, it read to me like it was two feet longer. I was confused by that.
Yeah, it's shorter, so it's within -- you know, if you took a bird's-eye view of the house, when this lower deck goes in, whether it's the one they propose or the one staff proposes, the bird's-eye view is going to stay the same because the upper deck is so large. Let me see if I can -- is it still?
That's okay. I think I just misread the staff report.
And you look at the lower-floor deck plan? See the dotted line? It says "edge of deck above." It's just a dotted line, and you'll see the posts for the upper deck along the very back of the new proposed lower deck. Here, let me point it out to you.
Linda, isn't it true that...
It's hard to see.
It's basically stacked underneath the existing deck.
Also, in discussion about the parking variance, the requirement that you pointed us to is -- let's see, I'm on page five of the staff report, and at the bottom of the first paragraph, we say -- you say that the town code, Section 171640C, goes on to indicate that 50 percent or more remodel expansions can occur if the parking on the site is either brought into compliance with the current parking regulations or a variance is granted by the planning commission. And when I looked at that section, it had three requirements in terms of the findings that we have to make. One, that the off-street parking requirements are matter, we've granted a variance. Two, that the work doesn't increase or create -- increase an existing nonconformity or create a new one, and it's not in the ridgeline or in a flood zone. And I was wondering about the fact that there is an existing nonconformity, given, I think, the history here, and I was wondering about your take on whether the work would increase an existing nonconformity, or if you've thought about that.
Let's get to the section you're looking at. So I don't believe that this will increase a nonconformity. If they were trying to increase the number of bedrooms in the house, I think it would, but they're converting the upper bedroom, they're removing the closet, and now has a built-in desk. We all know that people can use even living rooms for bedrooms, but they're taking a two-bedroom house, and it's going to remain a two-bedroom house. And the parking has existed for a two-bedroom house the way it exists now, and I have not gotten complaints from neighbors in that neighborhood. I don't know if they've worked it out, but I don't believe that this house is like over-parking the street parking. So I just think it's going to be a status quo kind of thing. So I don't believe it's, you know, increasing a nonconformity. The proposed deck isn't increasing the already nonconforming setbacks. They are adding a bathroom, but bathrooms don't -- so the state of California lets you have two adults per bedroom, but bathrooms don't necessarily -- I mean, it would make it easier, but I don't know that that would really increase the number of people that can inhabit the house, so.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had was whether you talked with the applicant about the reduction in the deck size, the lower deck.
I did talk on the phone, and, you know, they -- I mean, I understand it can be hard to buy a house on a slope, and then your family changes, and you need more outdoor space, but I just feel that the town already granted an exception for the property. And so there is a large space up front, and there is a small front yard. And so is it comparable to what other homes around have on similar slopes? I think it already is. I think it already has quite a bit of deck space.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for staff?
Please, Linda, can you point me to or tell me the dimension of the lower deck from the floor -- from the doors of the bedroom to the edge of the deck in front of the bedroom doors? The lower deck. Is it six feet? Seven feet?
7.5 is what's proposed.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
You know, perhaps I should mention that this was continued from, you know, a previous meeting, and the applicants have made the deck smaller. The first deck that you were going to hear, but it ended up getting taken off the agenda, had an outdoor shower, and it was even larger. So he has reduced the size from what was originally proposed.
I have a question. I started to review this and couldn't really understand it, mostly because I think it's incomplete. I kind of wanted to see an elevation of the back, you know, to understand the stair better. I couldn't quite understand what was legal or what was built, what's trying to -- what are they trying to legalize for the bedroom? And it seems, you know, sometimes when you're trying to legalize, you don't know what was there before. So I wasn't sure if that's why there's no demolition plan.
Yeah, there was nothing -- there was no second floor before. It was just a one-story house.
It was a one-story house above.
And they put a stairway into the underfloor area.
So that was there already? This is what they're applying to legalize?
They're legalizing the stair -- the internal stairway, the bedroom, and they're proposing a second bathroom. So they're legalizing the storage underneath the carport. They did include that in their building permit when they redid their carport, and it went through without planning department review. So it was approved by the building department, and we discovered it later that it was something that the planning commission had not seen. So they're legalizing the existing storage area under the carport, and they're trying to legalize the bedroom underneath the house and the stair -- internal stairway, and they're proposing a new second bathroom and a rear deck to access both the storage and that lower bedroom.
So a question on clarification for that. So when the applicant came in for approval for the carport, the bedroom and the internal stairs weren't a part of that, so they were built after the carport was done?
I would ask the applicant that. That's what I believe happened, but I --
Okay.
The building inspector goes out, and he's looking at the carport. I don't know that he goes into the house. Can I -- I also want to clarify this 50 percent remodel definition that the town has. Sometimes these summer cabins, they were built as cabins, you know? They have one large living space upstairs, and so what it does for some of these smaller homes is just putting a stairway in, connecting you with that living room. The way our code reads is if you structurally affect a room, you have to count the square footage of that room as being altered. So they put the stairway in. So this bedroom and bathroom, it's not a huge addition. It's made a 50 percent remodel by our definition because the stairway connects not with like a closet or something, it connects with the great room, which is a large part of the house. So I've had people want to add bathrooms or closets, and it ends up being a 50 percent remodel to some of these smaller cottages. So we're kind of grappling with how to maybe try to make that fairer, you know? This is not a huge project.
Any other questions?
I have a, maybe an oddball question. Could this lower bedroom be an ADU?
I believe they are more than half a mile from a bus stop, so they would have to provide a fourth parking space if they wanted to try to make an ADU on this site.
Parking spaces were no longer required for ADUs.
If you're further than a half a mile from a bus stop, you still have to provide a parking space.
Oh, okay, there's the half-mile thing.
Yeah, if they wanted to -- if they wanted to take the bedroom later and make it into a JADU, they would not require additional parking. JADU is conversion of an existing legal bedroom to a JADU.
And this being a separate bedroom and bath could be a JADU because all you need is a hot plate, a sink, for a kitchen, right?
It requires installation of a kitchen at...
But that would be easy enough to do like that.
Yes.
Okay. Though it does seem like this becomes the master bedroom in the house.
I think it's the largest bedroom. It'll be the largest bedroom, yeah.
No other questions for staff? Does the applicant want to come up and speak?
Good evening. My name is Matt McDonald. I'm the homeowner. I have a couple photos here. Am I able to pass these out to you and just clarify something? I may skip around a little bit, so bear with me. I'll start with those. That's two photos there. The top photo is the -- it was the existing lower deck when we moved into the property in 2007. There was a lower deck that was attached to the rear of the home. There was no access to the lower floor. The deck was rotting, so we removed the deck, and you'll see on the second page, the footing is still existing. You'll see it inside the grate beams that were created for the upper deck, and then the tree, you'll see the same tree off to the left. So there was an existing deck when we moved in. It wasn't much use to us, but I just wanted to throw that out there to let you know that there was a structure there at one point when we moved in, so that was something we were just trying to replace. And then there were a few items here. I was going to try and clarify if I could, follow up on the -- I don't know how clear it is on the drawings, but the -- well, I'll start with the house itself. So the lower level of the house was -- it was there when we moved into the house. It was a storage space, but it was only accessed from the outside, so you had to walk around the side of the house, down the side of the house, and then there was an exterior door that opened up into it. So it was framed in. It was all part of the existing structure, but it was, you know, essentially two-by-fours, plywood floor, and that was where we stored, you know, most of our stuff. So, you know, we made the mistake of moving forward somewhat ignorant of, you know, the importance of the permit, the permitting process. It was done shortly after we moved in. The downstairs bedroom was there at the time that we did the remodel of the carport, which was just a couple years ago. And the bedroom, I'm not quite sure the rules about having a separate unit, but the lower bedroom is accessed through the stairway in the upper great room of the house, and it's an open stairwell. So it just basically drops down from the great room to the bedroom. So there is no separation. It's not, you know, in its existing form, there's no way that it could be utilized as a separate unit, and that's not our intention. And I think that's all I have for now. Do you want to say something?
I'm sorry, could you -- through the chair, could you just clarify for me? You said the existing lower bedroom was there with the deck? Was it the same size as what is currently there?
Yeah, everything that we did was within the existing walls, if you will, so it was the same footprint. It wasn't a bedroom, but the house itself, the structure, was there. The walls were, you know, the exterior walls were there. They were shingled.
Do you know if that was permitted work?
I do not know that.
Thank you.
Not without looking at the file and maybe getting the tax assessor's records, but it's pretty common for people to just use the siding of the house and put plywood floors in because there's no storage, right? So it's the one area that allows them to put, you know, store things. So it would be difficult, probably, to tell whether that was there with the original house or not.
And this is Leo Dinault. If there's no more questions for me, this is Leo Dinault, and he's our architect. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have another question for you. Are you willing to have a shorter deck in accordance with what the staff has recommended that we condition our approval of the resolution?
I would say yes to that. We are, and, you know, the intent -- and actually, one other thing I didn't mention is, if it's not clear, the upper floor sticks out two feet further. Maybe I did mention that. So it's deceiving on the drawing. So the -- I think Linda mentioned that there was a foot shorter. It's actually two feet. So, you know, if you're looking... So, you know, if you're looking at the elevation, there's the upper floor comes in two feet and the lower floor. So the, the deck itself would be two feet underneath the upper floor. And then the upper deck extends beyond that. Our thought, as she mentioned initially, we, we had a bigger deck there. And, and the thought process there was that the existing grade beams are in place for the upper deck. And, and there's a, you know, large framework there, there's posts there. So, uh, just for simplicity's sake, we, we thought tying into those, using those to create the lower deck made a lot of sense. So we didn't have to do anything else to the dirt, the soil and the grade. But I, I understand, um, I understand the perspective from Linda. And if we have to make something smaller, then, then we're open to that as well.
Thank you. Oh, while you're there.
Yeah.
Um, and maybe you can answer the questions versus your architect. So on the drawings, there's a couple of large, there's trees there. Is there any, um, and one of them is close to the stairs on the east side coming down? There's no discussion of, um, anything related to those trees? Or are there any plans, um, for altering those trees, removing the trees? There's a couple of oaks. So you're thinking that the construction would not impact any of those trees?
No, it, it wouldn't. And actually, that's something that we, we discussed at length because we really like that tree. We have a southern aspect, so we get a lot of heat and it provides a lot of shade for us. We, we intentionally dropped the staircase down on that, uh, eastern side, short of the tree, just to the grade. So they would come off the grade up to the, um, proposed deck. And then there is enough room there where you can get down safely and maneuver around the tree and, and the tree can stay.
And it wasn't clear on the stairs on the western side as far as any railing, what that was going to be? Or what the, the thought was as far as a guardrail or lattice or what? So I'd kind of like to have kind of some clarity on that. And then my other question would be, there's nothing on the, um, plans that relate to lighting? Either for the lower deck as it exists on the plans? Nothing related to lighting on that? So I'd like some kind of feedback on if you had intended lighting? And then what you were thinking?
Okay, yeah, I, I'll, I may leave the lighting question to Leo. We hadn't discussed that. As far as the railing for the stairs, um, the, the upper deck has, um, very simple railing. It's, it's a wooden top piece and it's got aluminum posts with just stainless steel cable. So it, it, it's open. It's not gaudy or ugly, you know, we can see out, you can see through. And, and we intended something similar, just something simple for the staircase going down the west side. We hadn't decided on a, an exact design, but, you know, that was our intention.
Okay, and then maybe, um, you can address the lighting.
Okay, thank you. I'm Leo. Typically what I do is for that, for lighting on small vertical posts like that is a low voltage lighting by Kichler, I think it is. They, it's a one and a half inch square that's mounted directly onto that. So it shines downward and slightly outward into, onto the deck. And it's usually placed every other post or depending, yeah, about every other post, every six feet. Or every 12 feet would be.
And then for the, um, the lower bedroom with the sliding glass doors, there was no, um, consideration of lights on the wall?
Yeah, there should be some light on the wall, but generally I've used a cylinder, which is a downward lighting. Cause it's, everywhere I work, whether it's the San Romano Valley or here, the neighbors don't want to see flood lamps. And we're sensitive to that. Part of, if I may explain about the deck. And when I was reading the purpose of the hillside residential overlay zone, I, I didn't want to create any more drilled piers. So using the structure that we already have, the posts that are there, I'm planning on adding beams onto the face of that, onto the inside of that in order to stop the deck there, which is at about seven feet. In order to make the eastern egress stairs be away from that oak tree that's on that corner. But the, if, if we go to three or four foot stairs and go directly towards that tree, we have to make a right turn somehow. I have to go down and make a landing, which makes it very difficult. Or possibly imposs, possibly impossible. Because if you make that turn, you're always going downhill and you keep, that stair keeps going and going. So for the two reasons of minimizing the grading and going around the tree, avoiding the tree, and still have some eastern egress.
Any other questions for the applicant or his architect? And just, oh, let me, I'm sorry, just for clarity, the bedroom down below wasn't there when the carport was done? It was?
No.
So it was done after the carport, the bedroom was added?
No, the bedroom was done a long time before the carport was. So it was, we did that shortly after we moved in. We moved in 2007.
Okay, and then the application that came to the planning commission after that was just for the carport and not addressing the bedroom?
Correct, just for the upper deck, uh, rebuilt and the carport.
Okay, thanks.
So if I understand what you're saying about the, the tree, the, moving it back another couple of feet is going to push the stairway right where the tree is? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, so when you get down, you're all of a sudden right into the tree. And we'd be building too close to the trunk.
And where the existing, um, so on this photo that we have, are the, the poles that we currently see are, are still beyond the ones that were the old ones?
Correct. It is beyond it, yes. It looks like, I, I can't, it looks like what, two feet, a foot beyond?
And that, that appears to be consistent with your, with your drawing. So it would still be less than the existing, uh, back, setback? Okay, those are my questions.
Thank you.
All right.
Does anyone, um, from the public wish to comment on this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the planning commission for discussion.
I, um, want to urge anybody listening that the planning process is not just so the town can get some fees, it's so that you can have the project done correctly. That's, that's to protect you mainly. And of course to conform to the building code as it is. My, my feeling about this project is it's fine. I would go with a 189, um, limit square foot deck. I'd like to see that in the plans, but I guess you guys will see it. So I, I could, I could go for this, um, and the, um, on the parking variance, I would, I would go with the smaller, the two smaller spaces. Mini spaces, whatever you call, want to call them. And I think, I think that would then, um, make a nice, uh, compromise between the house's situation and the legal requirements.
And to heck with the tree?
No, not to heck with the tree. Let's, let's hear about the tree more.
Well, what we heard was the reduction in the lower deck will necessitate the movement of the stairs such that we will be interfering with the location of the tree.
Well, then I suggest, um, going back to the drawing board and figuring out something else. Perhaps a, you know, a circular staircase or something that might not require a 90-degree turn. They're also kind of nice. Something like that perhaps would not interfere with the tree, right?
And does it, uh, does it really concern you, the deck size for what basis? Because of the upper deck being large or, uh, because of the rear setback?
Yeah, I don't think we want to increase the chaos by having, you know, more variances to setbacks than, than we want to have. You know, the trouble is, as, as was pointed out by staff, you know, this house was built as a cottage and a long time ago and without consideration much of, uh, you know, future larger or different families living there. So I think accommodation needs to happen. And I think that there are architectural ways to protect the tree and, uh, and shorten the deck. And I hope my voice holds up all night.
Mimi? Oh, go ahead. Can I speak to Mimi's questions?
Please.
Okay, so, um, I support staff's suggestion for reducing the deck. And I believe that the lower deck has more impact to the setbacks because it's closer to the grade. The upper deck is significantly raised above the grade and is further away. So that, that was my thoughts and I agree with staff's decision. And I don't know why the stairway has to be in this location. It seems like there's more room on the opposite end. And so I don't know what, I think either way, wherever the stair is, it's crowded. In that location, it's crowding the tree, whether it's, the deck is in, um, as shown? If it's further out seven feet or if it's, I mean, if you do move it back, yes, you will have a more, more of a conflict. But I'm not sure why the stairway has to be exactly in that location. So, um, those are my comments.
Lester, did you have comments?
Well, yes, not exactly, you know, requests. Uh, you know, I think this is, um, one of those projects that is going to have compromises. Because there are so many atypical conditions and a lot of this was inherited. I applaud the applicant for trying to legalize what is already there. That's a huge step to come forward. But I feel like there are many compromises and that I don't understand on these plans. You know, I, I support what you're trying to do, but I need more clarity. I kind of want to see more and I want to see the, you know, the deck and the stair changes reflected. You know, we, we're conflicted about defensible space and how trees should not be that close to the house. And so, you know, depending on who you ask, you know, maybe that tree goes away with an arborist report, I don't know. But, um, I think if, you know, if we're preserving the trees, if there is a way to keep it, then it, I'm not sure that we're seeing what we need to approve here tonight. So just in general, I, you know, I support and applaud what you're trying to do. I just, I need more clarity, I need more drawings to understand. And I need to see the changes that we're talking about reflected.
So my thoughts on this is, um, I support staff's recommendation to have a four-foot bottom deck. When I went and looked at the project, um, for the last meeting and, um, visualized what the larger deck on the bottom would look like on that piece of property where, you know, the road's right there and it's kind of this corner piece. I thought the lower deck would be too obtrusive into that, into that space. So I support, um, the narrower deck. And, and staff's recommendation on that. As to wanting to see new plans on this or, um, you know, would we be comf, comfortable? Would we be comfortable, um, depending on where we go with letting staff and the applicant work that out? I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there. But I would support staff's recommendation.
What's, what's the timeline on this application?
If you were going to continue it again, the applicant would have to jointly agree with you to a continuance and a waiver of the permit streamlining time limits.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yes. If you wanted to continue it, the applicant would have to mutually agree with the planning commission to an extension of time and not to exceed 90 days and to waive the permit streamlining time limits. But, but let me ask the planning director. But what's our October meeting looking like? I don't know that we could actually fit it on there, so you might be looking.
I think we're okay.
You think we're okay? Okay, so you could continue it to November if you felt you needed to see those plans.
And that just means, I'm sorry, that just means that you basically don't have to turn around your review in 90 days. It, it doesn't really impact them with fees or? Okay, so it's just?
If you continue it to a date certain and if they feel they can get the drawings ready by the next meeting, we don't have to go through the step of re-noticing it?
Since I, my understanding is we now act as the tree committee would on, uh, plans that might involve trees that are subject to the town's tree ordinance. Is that correct?
Yeah, their determination is made that it will or could affect trees. That would be within the purview of your commission.
You know, and I, I guess what I heard from the applicant was that, you know, the applicant is willing to, uh, move forward with the reduced deck size, but there's this issue about the stairwell. And I, I wonder if we can give the applicant the option of moving forward with the reduced deck size and, uh, a different stair design that would not impact a tree? Versus the other option being the extension and coming back, uh, in, uh, two months, I guess, for, for the review. And that way, uh, the applicant might be able to move forward if it was that important to them to, to move forward, uh, with a different stair and not have to come to us. I, I would think if there was going to be an impact on a tree, I'd want to see more information about that.
Well, I think if, um, if there is an impact to a tree, then I don't know if that would need to go to the tree committee.
You know, it only goes?
Normally what we would send them, if it's known ahead, we would send them the application along with everybody else.
If there was, if there was, if there was, if there was the expectation that they were going to have to remove trees or make significant alterations to existing trees? Like if they were running a sewer line through the roots or something? We would have, we would have sent this to the tree committee for their recommendation to you before this meeting. We don't believe that that's the case with this tree, so.
Through the chair, can, can you follow up on that? This photo we just received this evening, was this foundation recently laid when they did the lower bedroom remodel?
No, that, that was done.
That's very close to the tree.
That was done when they built the upper deck back in 2014, correct? Yes.
Was there ever an assessment of the, any damage to the tree?
I would have to go back through the file, but this did go, the deck did go through a public hearing in front of the planning commission.
And that's, I believe, a different tree than the tree we would be discussing with the narrower, lower deck.
There is another tree, yes, in that, in that corner, I understand. I also am leaning towards staff's recommendation of a narrower deck because it does bring it down to that level of the trees and the canopies of the trees. It extends the property further in that way. I noticed in one of the prior photos, it appears as though the door to the lower bedroom just had some steps that walked right down to the ground. And then you would walk around and pick up the stairs going the other way. Whereas now, there's going to, there's already a lot more structure there. My biggest concern is that these plans are not very clear. You know, you don't see the whole other side of the stairs coming down and connecting up the other side of the house. And it... One of the problems with this property historically has been that we've never known what's there. We've never had a good set of plans of what is there? What is the basis that we're starting from? So I don't have a problem with the bathroom and the new bedroom. Apparently, that's your new master bedroom. That makes sense, that's the room I would take if I was living there. But I would like to see plans that are reflective of what's being built, for the record.
So let me ask the commission. It sounds like we're all in agreement on the staff's recommendation for the lower deck. And there may be some question or concern about that oak that's on the eastern side. How does the commission feel if we are all in favor of that narrower deck, leaving it to the applicant and the planning commission to address that lower deck and the stairs and the tree?
Did you mean the...
I mean, I'm sorry, the planning department, you guys.
I have a concern about delegating approval of tree-related stuff. I mean, I think we just got this. This would be our first tree, right?
First tree, tree?
So we just had a new, a new ordinance, right? It's in the report about the new ordinance that makes us responsible for tree-related decisions instead of the tree committee.
I thought you got one other application before this.
But that's, but that's assuming that when we have an application that is expected to affect trees and that goes to, when it goes to fire and police and everybody else, that it goes to the planning commission so that the planning commission, I mean, the planning commission, the tree commission, sorry, the tree commission does their review and then they would provide us their comments on that. And we would look at it as a whole. And I'm not even sure we've actually had an application that went through that process, that we got comments back from the tree committee, but I could be wrong.
I just misunderstood because I thought that's what you're suggesting we have staff do now. And so I misunderstood. Maybe you could restate what you were saying.
So what I was considering was if we're all in agreement on staff's recommendation on the lower deck, that we have planning department and the applicant work together to finalize what that lower deck would look like with the stairs and address the tree within that. And maybe I should ask the planning department how...
So there is a way to design these stairs so that they will not impact that tree. There's so many different ways to do it. It's been pointed out, it could come off the other side. I mean, it could be as... There's no reason that a stairway down from that deck has to impact that tree.
Furthermore, if we're looking at pier, pier system, you can basically do a hand dig before you actually drill the piers if it's necessary to support the stairway, which it probably would be. And that hand digging would enable you to design the location of those piers, you know, to locate them so that they didn't impact major roots. So there's, as Linda said, there's ways you can, we could do that at a staff level if that's your commission's direction.
I mean, I would feel comfortable with that. Hello commissioners?
Yeah, I mean, after we had that education from that esteemed arborist about the size of the roots that come out of the tree and where they go. And we already have a problem with this particular tree and it's right next to the wall of the bedroom. So that's, that's already an issue. But there are circular staircases, there's all kinds of ways. I mean, you could do an elevator. Well, there's many ways, I agree with you, to do this another way. And I still, that's, that's what I think. And can we leave it up to the discretion of staff? I don't know. Not sure about that.
Yeah, my only concern was having staff address the tree seemed a little vague. I would, I would rather say so long as there was no, as staff was assured there was no impact or need for an examination of the tree, you know, by the planning commission or the tree committee.
And that would alleviate, you know, working between the applicant and the, and the planning department would alleviate potentially the applicant having to come back to see us.
Can we make a suggestion? Because you can just include a condition. If you want to make it a condition that a certified ISA arborist, you know, do a study on the tree and make recommendations for how to maintain its health during construction and that shall be submitted with the building permit, then there's no question of whether the tree's going to get forgotten or, you know, not taken care of.
But I think that would be after there's a design though, too. And you all are going to be working on a design that may...
Actually, I think that would be before you do a design, you figure out what you can do, how close you can get.
Yeah, I mean, if they moved, if they moved the stair to the other side so that there's, there's no deck, then there would be no need for the arborist report. But you could just phrase it such that if the deck, if the stairway from the deck is as proposed, they shall submit an arborist report with their building permit, assessing the health of that tree and making recommendations for how to maintain its health during and after construction.
And we could, if necessary, if we have a disagreement with the applicant's arborist, we could refer it to our town arborist for backup. So as I said, you know, there's some pretty standard root protection measures that arborists can take. And if we directed the applicant to hire an ISA-certified arborist to work in consultation with the architect, I think they could probably come up with a basic design that addresses that issue.
I was about to recommend that because I already have concerns about the existing foundation that's there, that we don't know when it was put in and we don't have it on the plans. And I would, I would like to see a completed plan of what is proposed to be built. Not maybe, I would like to see a drawing of what will be built and have it match what's built.
So are you saying that you're not comfortable with the staff and the applicant reconsidering, I mean, coming up with the plans for the staff-recommended lower deck and you would want it to come back to us versus leaving it to staff's discretion?
That would be my preference.
How does everybody else feel on that?
I'm comfortable with staff approving the set during building permit stage.
Yeah, I'm also comfortable with staff doing that. But this discussion about the fact that we are also really the, sort of the tree committee as well is, is making me, you know, have a second thought about that tree. So I'm comfortable with that. And I also think the applicant probably would benefit from a permit sooner than later with the winter coming. I don't know if there's a consideration with that, but that's another thought I have.
Mimi?
I'm not really sure.
Okay. I'm comfortable with leaving it to staff's discretion to work with the applicant on that. Do you have?
I think staff could work with the applicant, but I don't think it would take that much more time if they could come back to show it to us in October.
Yeah, I mean, I hate requiring additional expenditures on the part of the applicant for arborist if there's a way to redesign this so you don't need to invoke that kind of expense. And I guess because of, you know, part of me is completely comfortable with asking staff to review the deck design and determine at what point it should be approved if we have reached this far of an agreement in terms of the square footage and really the only issue is the stairway design. What I have a little bit of discomfort with, frankly, is delegating to staff the decision as to whether or not there's a need to require an arborist and whether or not to bring it back to us. I mean, I think it's probably perfectly obvious if it's a stairwell that's nowhere near a tree. But at the same time, just from how we function as a planning commission, I have a question about how we delegate that role to a different body, which is staff. So I guess I'm a little bit confused. So that's where I'm coming out, just so you guys understand.
So if staff can come to an agreement and the stairs aren't anywhere near there, then there's no... The stairs aren't anywhere near the tree, then is there a concern or is there still a concern that with the construction of the lower deck, regardless of where the stairs wind up, that we would want an arborist report to look at the existing trees on the property and the impact? I mean, you know, from that perspective, I mean, that is an added cost. Could staff, if there is an issue with a tree, then just bring it back to us?
Well, here's another thing that we could do is a referral of these plans to the town arborist wouldn't entail the same expense in terms of design. He could probably come up with some general design parameters and provide that to staff. So if we were to do that and he were to say, "Look, you have to, you know, you should stay a minimum of eight feet." I mean, there are standard design steps that you can take. As I said, you basically hand dig it, probe, look for roots greater than two inches in diameter, et cetera. So the arborist could come up with a punch list, give that to the applicant and say, "Do this." Provided that he can be consistent with that, you're not going to have any impacts. If there's a disagreement or any question about impacts, then we could come back to your commission.
Or the tree committee.
Well, we would route it to the tree committee first.
Can I, can I say another thing? One of my concerns is that we're setting a precedent here that could really hurt the town in terms of the design review and what we are requiring a lot of other applicants to provide and what is being approved here. So, you know, not only are we discussing trees, we're discussing egress, which is a fire life safe... Well, in this case, maybe not. But we've got trees, design and egress. Lights, I don't see any lights. And like I said, although I support this, I really need to see more. And I really feel like we're setting ourselves up by not, you know, requiring this applicant to meet the minimum standard of what we require from all our other applicants. So, you know, I'd like to see a demolition plan. I'd like to see the elevation from the back. I'd like to see what the stair looks like. So that was kind of my concern when I started to review this. I quite didn't understand it and I just feel like there's too much missing here. And again, I think, you know, I think although I admire our staff and believe that they are quite competent, I'm just worried about the precedent we're setting.
So normally, we would have, in a, in a normal application, we do see more complete plans. For this application, it's not something that we asked for the first time it came before us.
Yeah, I'm sorry I wasn't here. I apologize.
That's okay. And so I think for this application, at this point in time, to go back and then say, you know, resubmit, you know, a fuller set of plans, I don't think is necessarily...
Can we ask the applicant if they're amenable to that?
Well, if, if, I guess my thought is you may be the only individual that wants that. And, you know, if that's the case...
I also have asked for a set of plans that are thorough and show us exactly what will be built.
Okay, so that's two. Laura?
I understand Esther's comment, but I don't know, maybe because I'm a design professional, I kind of understand what's going on. But I do, I am kind of confused on one point because I believe this is the first time that we, that we've heard this application.
Well, you had it scheduled for an agenda and you got a staff report and you received the plans. And then at the last minute, the applicant requested a continuance.
That's right, so we haven't seen this.
So you, you had it in a, you had it in a packet, yeah.
Okay, it was in a packet, but we, it was...
It was not discussed on the, at the meeting. But you had a staff report and the plans.
Right, so I think, and in the, in the staff report, it said that it was mutually agreed to continue it. So I don't think I paid much attention to the plans because I just went on to the other agenda items.
So how do you feel about it at this point? Do you feel that you're comfortable with it as it is now? Or would you want them to come back with a fuller set of plans?
Well, I'm comfortable approving it with the, with the changes that we've recommended for staff to review. Normally, I would, I would say that we would need more of the information. But I think part of it, because it's kind of already built, it's kind of easier to understand what's, what's being proposed. But I think that Norma does have a good point, that there should be something in the record of documenting what all of the existing conditions are. So maybe that is something that we can add to the resolution, that a complete set of as-built plans, including exterior elevation, should be included as part of the building permit drawings.
Mimi?
Yeah, I'm comfortable allowing staff to make determinations as to the, you know, the particulars of the deck size in the, you know, final building approval process. And, you know, giving them the authority to seek the advice of the town arborist if they are concerned about the revised stairway design with respect to any of the trees. And if so, forward that on to the tree committee and then bring it back to us. But otherwise, you know, we've got language in here about an exterior lighting plan being submitted. This is on page five. You know, and I think that, you know, I am... You know, and I think that, you know, I am, I do have a little bit, one more question about the provision of access and egress for the bedroom that you added to the end of the, or you wanted to see us add to the end of the ordinance. Linda, paragraph 31. Could you read that edit again?
Yeah, we just, we want to make it clear that, okay, that the approximately 189 square foot deck accessing the storage room and providing egress and access, egress and access deck for the lower bedroom will be the minimum width required by the building code.
Which is what, four feet?
We believe it's, I believe it's four feet.
Are you saying it will be the four foot?
Four feet or less. I mean, it has to confine, it has to be the minimum to meet code. It can't be any bigger.
Oh, it can't be bigger?
Right, right.
For residential, it is three feet, but I think that we can allow four feet in this particular...
Four feet's fine. I just, I know, I know people are concerned about the lighting, but I want to remind you that this parcel is surrounded on three sides by roadway and the neighbors are either uphill or way down the hill. And so they are going to provide a lighting plan. They've indicated that the lighting will all shine down. Our building inspector will review that plan. That's required for the building permit. So it's not, it's not like nobody's going to look at the lighting plan.
Can we specify LEDs?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because the use of cylindrical lights, they're either going to have vents on top, which then light comes up, or LEDs, which don't need vents. It's not as much venting.
You can specify anything you want.
I would, I guess, I think I would leave that just to planning department's discretion for that. I know, you know, when you talk LEDs, you have to get into color as well, so I would leave that, I think, just leave that to their discretion.
Yeah, we...
As long as it's dark sky compliant.
Exactly. We get spec sheets and they show where the light illumination area is, and so it would be addressed in the cutoffs with that design, whatever design that ends up being.
Could I ask Mimi, I wasn't sure, I heard you say two things. I heard you say you were comfortable having staff make some of these decisions, but that it would then go to the tree committee and then come back to the planning commission. So I heard you say staff could do it, but then it would come back to the planning commission.
I think what I was trying to say was if in staff's discretion, the redesign of the stairs or anything to do with the smaller deck appears to be potentially impacting a tree, that's the subject of our tree ordinance and would otherwise require either the tree committee or the planning commission to give a thumbs up to that alteration or impact or whatever, that at that point, they would be authorized to ask the town arborist to put a report together for whatever tree issue there was, refer it to the tree committee and then bring it back to us for a decision.
Okay, and how do you feel about having a set of plans that reflects what's built, given the iterations that this property has been through?
I think obviously it's preferable to have more detailed plans. In this particular case, given that we're not really going beyond the existing footprint and that most of this work was done a long time ago and they're not increasing the living size and the parking, you know, variance is doable, I am not, I don't feel compelled to seek further, further work on those plans as a precondition of us giving this approval. I mean, if it's going to come back to us, they might as well give us more detail, but if they can avoid coming back to us by taking this to staff and, and getting what they've got going and giving staff some authority to review both the lighting plan, which we have enough detail in terms of the night sky in that paragraph already, and the tree, you know, frankly, those are my biggest concerns.
I would agree to that and, and I would have confidence in staff handling it, but I would want to see upon submission of a building permit that the plans reflect in some way, even if it's staff writing it out and redlining what is built and dimensioned at a minimum.
Oh, I see. So when, when they submit the building permit, you want it clear that the internal stairway is already there and the lower bedroom's already there and the storage is already there.
And I want the dimensions of things and the, how they get off of the stair onto whatever the next path is. I want dimensions. I want the width, I want the depth, I want dimensions.
I think that would be...
You want the submission of as-built plans after, you know, if, even if staff administratively approves all the rest of the stuff, that's still a fine idea, I think.
Yeah, that, that you can just, I think, add under, under number one. You can say, "As-built plans shall be submitted with the building permit application for the proposed new construction," right at the end of one. Fully dimensioned, fully dimensioned as-built plans.
I also think Esther had a good point about there's not really any exterior elevations. So, so in addition to floor plans, exterior, exterior elevations as well.
Okay, so fully dimensioned as-built plans and elevations. Shall be submitted with the building permit application for the new construction. Does that sound good? Okay.
That's, that sounds good. Do we need to, I mean, I'm thinking maybe we need to add some language in one after what you're writing that says maybe something like, "However, due to this property's situation and prior development and for this permit only, we can approve this resolution based on the plans at hand," something like that. So that it's really clear that it's just because of it's this property and its particular situation.
So I wouldn't use plans at hand because plans at hand are what we have in our hand right now.
Or as to be modified to accommodate the 189 square foot deck, something like that. Then we can take care of the future as well somewhat, so someone looking back here and saying, "Well, they didn't have to submit full plans for their hearing." We'll say, "Yeah, but look at that condition. Look at that rezo." And yeah, and so you have to, next builder. I mean, I agree, we're on a hillside property here and elevations are kind of more important than usual. So I kind of in agreement with that general philosophy, but I don't want to hold this project up for that.
So do you have that, Linda?
Just give me a minute.
Okay.
Okay, I think I did.
Phil, do you have proposed language for, oh no, we're going to stick with paragraph 13, just adding the changes that Linda had read in the beginning of the meeting, I think. But Linda may have misspoke. Right now it says, "An exterior lighting plan shall be submitted," and I thought, Linda, you said, "Any exterior lighting plan shall be submitted." And I think we leave it to say, "An exterior lighting plan shall be submitted with the building permit application and any new exterior lighting shall use dark sky compliant fixtures." I also think in the paragraph eight, we could say, which is on page four, "Any changes, modifications, additions, or alterations made to the approved set of plans will require a modification of application 1809 other than as set forth in paragraph one," because we'll be talking about our anticipated modification in paragraph one. So in paragraph one, I think we'd say something along the lines of, I guess, adding a new sentence, "As-built plans," whatever you've got there, "will be submitted with..."
Okay. Okay, "Fully dimensioned as-built plans and exterior, and all exterior elevations, exterior elevations of all sides of the house shall be submitted with the building permit. However, due to the property situation and the site conditions, the plans provided with the recommended changes by the planning commission," and then I couldn't catch the, how you finished it, "are adequate, are adequate for commission action at this time? Adequate for..."
Say, "And this property situation required and for this permit only."
Okay, "And for this permit only."
Are adequate to support the commission's findings?
I had a change, not to 13 per se, but a new 14 to have we, we don't really have a condition about these eastern stairs. I'm not sure what to say, but something like the eastern, however we're going to designate these stairs, these eastern stairs shall be redesigned or repositioned to avoid tree impacts and that applicant will submit plans to the town arborist for comment and approval by staff, is what I had written.
But we're only doing the arborist if staff determines, once they've looked at the revised and worked out the revised plans for that smaller deck, that there is a need to consult with the arborist. We're not doing it, going into it unless there's a need to consult.
I think, I'm sorry, through the chair, I think typically you consult with an arborist first before you develop plans.
Right, but we're, we're leaving this to staff's discretion with the revised drawings for that deck to look at that and then make that determination if they need to go to the town's arborist for a consult.
Yes, so how is this? "The eastern stairs shall be redesigned or repositioned to avoid impacts to the oak tree." I can't read that.
And as necessary...
And the applicant shall, shall submit plans to the town arborist for review if staff determines the redesign may, the redesign or repositioning may impact the tree.
That, that sounds good.
So this actually assumes that our applicant would go along with the idea of bringing this back if we determined it appropriate based on the tree issue, right?
You mean, mean if you continued it?
Right, we'd need to get the applicant's...
Yeah, he'd, yeah, he could ask for a decision tonight and then, you know, if he's not happy with the decision, he has the authority to appeal it.
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I was suggesting was, you know, we're moving ahead with the idea that we will give you, staff, discretion to figure out if this needs to be brought back to us. And in that eventuality, you would need the applicant's agreement, right?
It's a condition of approval, so I think as, as proposed in the conditions, if we felt that it may impact the tree and we consulted with the town arborist and he concurred and the applicant weren't willing to modify it, then it goes back into the planning commission. In essence, because it's a redesign, that would give us that ability to say, "This redesign goes back to your commission."
Right.
But you'd have to charge the reapplication fee in that case, right? Whereas if we gave him tonight the option to continue unless he can get it past your discretionary review without needing to bring it to us, then you have like conditional approval of the extension if you do have to bring it to us.
My guess, and we could ask the applicant to comment, is that he will be very anxious to design his revisions so that they avoid any impact to the tree and can avoid going back to your commission.
Because he's already stated that they like the tree and they want to keep it, so they, they don't want to injure the tree, correct?
Correct.
If we say to him, "What you're doing is going to injure the tree that you want to, that screens your, that shades your house," he's already, he's already indicated at a public hearing that he wants to keep that tree healthy, so I can't imagine there being a problem.
Okay, I'm overthinking it, sorry.
So do we have a motion ready? Anybody want to make it?
Yeah. I will take a stab at a motion to approve resolution 2019 of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving a conditional use permit, design review permit, combined front rear setback variance and parking variance at 402 Scenic Road with modifications to the resolution as discussed at this evening's planning commission meeting regarding the language in paragraph one at the bottom of page three that was read by Linda regarding the submission of the as-built plans and the position and site conditions being adequate to support the commission's findings this evening. With the changes to paragraph eight that we discussed on page four, referring back to the paragraph one modifications, the changes to paragraph 13 that Linda discussed regarding the exterior lighting, the revised, I'm sorry, the new paragraph 14 regarding the redesign and repositioning of the stairs and staff's determination about the tree, and the revisions to paragraph 31 regarding access and egress and the lower bedroom minimum width requirement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, any opposed? Motion carries.
I abstain. I don't know whether to abstain or oppose.
It carries either way, right? Then I'll abstain.
So is that two abstentions?
Yes.
Thank you. So there is a, God, I just went blank, a 10-day appeal process with a $500 fee. Thank you.
I still don't know what you guys approved. Did Mimi's condition of coming back get approved? She had that weird condition that if the town arborist and staff realized that the design didn't change, or that the new design impacted the tree, that it had to come back.
So next on our agenda is 102 Miranda Drive, application 1913.
Okay, ready? Okay. So this proposed sign was originally reviewed by the planning commission at your August 15 meeting, where you continued it and you requested some additional drawing information. You also recommended that the applicants reach out to the other business, the preschool that's operating from the site, to try to come up with some kind of combined sign, because they are going to need a sign. So they've provided you with the drawings you requested. You had a set in your packet, but the applicant actually brought in another set that I think the colors might be a little bit better, and I passed those out to you. Since the last meeting, the Kinderblast preschool, which also operates on the charter site, has submitted their proposed sign, which is exhibit C in the packet that was in your complete packet. And the sign would measure six square feet in size, be six feet long and one foot tall, and would be made of the same, by the same sign company and out of the same materials as the charter school sign, and it would be erected immediately below the charter school sign. So the charter school sign with the Kinderblast sign below it would have a minimum clearance above the ground of approximately one and a half feet. So the project requires an exception to the sign ordinance because the sign ordinance prohibits monument signs unless the monument sign is approved by the planning commission. We've reviewed the location and don't believe it's going to create any kind of visibility problems. It's in the same location that the St. Rita's sign was approved for. It's really the only location for a school sign that's visible from Sir Francis Drake, where the traffic will be able to see it, because the school is set so far back behind the buildings. So we believe it really is the minimum necessary to provide a sign for both these businesses, and so we're recommending that you approve the project by adopting resolution 2019-16, which sets forth the findings and the conditions of approval for the sign permit.
Does the commission have any questions for staff?
Through the chair, I do have one. Linda, do you happen to have a photograph that was in our last staff report of the existing Santa Rita's school sign?
So you're talking about the photo of the St. Rita's sign?
The photo of the existing.
The photo of the St. Rita's frame with the charter school temporary banner on it?
The St. Rita's sign with the St. Rita's frame and the St. Rita's lettering.
You mean the church sign?
See, well, that's...
That's the sign that...
What was up there.
The brown sign.
The brown sign that's there now.
There's a sign to the left of the church that is the church sign, that's a separate sign than this one. So are you asking about a picture of the church sign itself that's on the corner?
Yes.
Linda, do you also have the original proposed design? I kind of forgot. Do you have, it was in the packet.
The one that was attached to the last staff report?
I think I remember, but I'm not sure.
You guys are ripping apart my file here. Oh, boy, this makes me nervous. Is this the one you're talking about? With the blue?
Linda, is the Kinderblast, this proposal that's attached to the packet?
Attached to C.
The Kinderblast preschool, this is part of what we're approving, right? This is the sign that they're proposing, and it's purple.
Yes, it is. I know.
Okay, awesome purple color. That's nice these days, but I have a problem with how anybody's going to see the Kinderblast sign if it's covered in bushes. That's kind of what my question is, is it's so low, is that reality? Is that what's happened to it?
No, I believe they'll trim it, and correct me if I'm wrong, applicants, but the banner sign is wider than the actual sign is going to be. So the banner that's out there now is wider.
I understand.
It's going to be higher, and the Kinderblast is going to fit.
I just don't see how anybody's going to see it, but they'll trim the bushes back and keep it, yeah, okay, good.
Through the chair, is the sign that the Ross Valley Charter is placing, will it be placed on a frame that's exactly as this frame?
I believe so, but I would double-check that with the applicants. I believe it's going to be the same, the same...
It's the same frame?
It's the same frame.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? You want to hear from the applicant? Anything? Don't have to.
Yeah, we just tried to answer all the questions from the last meeting and give you all the information that you desired, so if you still have any lingering questions, feel free to ask.
Go ahead and ask this question. On the site now, there are two signs that look exactly like this?
No, there's one sign that's, if you're facing the church from the library, on the left-hand side, there's a sign for the church itself.
This?
Yes.
Okay.
And on the right-hand side is where, right-hand side is where the former school sign was, and right now is where we have the temporary banner up.
And the school sign does not have this wooden frame around it? It's just plain, square?
It would have a, it would have a frame on it like that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because that's not reflected in your drawings, so I wasn't sure. In other words, your drawings show a solid face sign that covers the full exterior perimeter. No frame shows in your drawings.
Yes, right now, there are two posts that remain from the old school sign, so we will utilize those two posts.
But the frame, the wooden frame, is not there?
No, the wooden frame is no longer there.
Okay, I thought the wooden frame was there.
No, there's no frame left.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was my confusion, because I liked the frame, and I thought you were getting rid of the frame, but the frame is already gone.
The frame and the sign are gone, it's just the two...
It's just the posts, and that's why you're going flat, straight to the edge, modern.
Yep, exactly.
Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I just might make a comment that from a design review perspective, the old framing idea was a good one, because it kind of matched the roof line of the church, you know, which is a red brick, Spanish-style roof, and it kind of goes with it. But then again, the school isn't part of the church, so that would be, but from a design review perspective, I would like to see that, but I'm not going to make it a condition or anything, I'm just suggesting a red, redwood frame or something like that around it might be kind of blend in a little better.
That was my, through the chair, that was my point exactly, that I thought it would be the exact same frame, which blends much better with the historic fabric of the building, and the sign is going to be right in front of the building.
Did you want to...
I'll just clarify, the school prior to us that was there, they did not have the wooden, the wooden frame either, they just had the same materials that we're proposing to use. So we just thought, in order to keep it simple, we would do the same thing.
If it were me alone, I would even go putting a little bit of Spanish tile roof across the top of the sign.
I have to say, I do appreciate the redesign. I think it, you really took our comments to heart, and I think you'll agree, it's a much better design that even reads better. But I would also, I had assumed that it would have a wood frame, which I think would be aesthetically even more pleasing and still blend very much with what you have.
I agree. It doesn't have to be brown, but it would be nice to have something kind of, I don't know, it's just maybe I'm old-school.
Any other questions for the applicant or comments? Thank you. Anyone from the public wishing to comment on this?
I agree with the purple.
And can you say that again, please?
Yeah, Sarah Tewksbury, I own a house somewhat near St. Rita's. My comment on this is just, so St. Rita's currently has three tenants, I believe, the charter, Kinderblast, the preschool, and Thunderblast, a camp, and there could even be another one, I think, there could be more, they have space, that's how they make their money. So if you have four renters, I mean, who's to say they might change out just because Kinderblast is okay with a small sign? If you give a size variance to one of the renters, doesn't that sort of open the door for however many renters St. Rita's has, they're all entitled then to that big sign, or a big sign, right?
Staff, you want to address that?
They're not requesting an exception to the sign size limits. It's an exception to the location that requires signs to be on the building. That won't work in this case, because the building is set back from the street, but you're actually allowed one square foot of sign for each one foot of building frontage. So, and each business in a building is allowed to have its own sign based on whatever the frontage of their space is. So this is not an exception to have a larger sign than is allowed.
So...
And the other businesses that come in will be either proposing signs that comply with the sign ordinance, or if they don't comply with the sign ordinance, they will be going through a public hearing in front of you, and those signs will be reviewed on their own merits.
Thank you.
So, okay, just to clarify, we could...
Wait a minute, we're still in public comment?
Okay, sorry.
Oh, so I was just going to ask, just add, so just so I understand, so if there's, let's just say, four renters there, there could be four signs as big as the charter school sign in front, potentially, yes?
Not if the planning commission does not wish to see that. They would deny those additional sign requests.
So one tenant gets a bigger sign than the other ones?
It is the main use there, so. It's utilizing the most square footage of the existing school space.
So that's how sign size is based on your square footage of the renter?
Each renter is allowed, each renter is allowed a sign. Free-standing signs require the review and approval of the planning commission. Any additional signs, if they comply with the code, they just get processed at a staff level. If they request another sign out at the street, that's an exception to the sign ordinance, it would go through its own public hearing process, and the planning commission would determine whether they felt it was located properly, whether it was the right size, you know, in relation to the different buildings that surround the monument sign. Each sign gets reviewed on its own merits.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments?
Sharon Sager, Fairfax resident, and also board chair of RVC. I just want to clarify for the planning commission that, in fact, RVC and Kinderblast are renting the entire back buildings that were the school site. The only other space on the property is church property, so even though it's been suggested that there might be some other future tenants, that would only be if the church rented out part of their existing church space to another tenant, it wouldn't have anything to do with the school building portion, which we both have multi-year leases on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm bringing it back to the commission for discussion.
I guess I'll start. I really appreciated the redesign personally, much more pleasant to the artist and me, and I don't have any concerns or comments on this.
Yeah, me too. I mean, I think, I think that the school needs a sign, and the preschool needs a sign. I just hope that they maintain those bushes so the preschool sign can be seen.
Anyone else?
I appreciate that Linda was able to find the original application, because I was kind of confused about what was originally approved at the site, when they talked about the reader board, and then I think the reader board, I think it may have been there when they did the original in 2001, but when they did, replaced it with the other sign, the one that Norma showed up, that it wasn't included. So, I don't know, I had reservations at first that maybe with the adding the Kinderblast sign may have been too much, but it still seems like it was less than what was originally approved. And I do think that Norma's suggestion about adding a frame, or maybe even possibly it could be some kind of detail, border detail, could further enhance, but otherwise, I agree that the revisions are nice, and I'm happy that they took our suggestions to heart. I would like to have documented, there's no dimensions on the Kinderblast sign, I think you said in the report that it's four foot by one foot, but there's no, there's no dimensions.
No, it's six foot by one foot.
Oh, six foot.
It's going to, it's going to be the same with the Kinderblast, but it's only one feet.
So there should be, it should be documented as part of the record somewhere that we...
Yes, it's described in the staff report, but they actually need a building permit first to erect signs, and so we'll make sure that the dimensions are on the building permit submittal.
Okay.
I also appreciate the revised version, and I appreciate that you photoshopped it into where it's going to be located, because it kind of shows how it complements the building behind, you know, the main church there, so that's much better. I do agree that some kind of frame or even just the posts, the way you had it originally, would anchor it down and make it more of a monumental sign, you know, and I'm not going to deny the approval just because of that, but I agree. I think that would really stabilize it, and I see there's an opportunity to improve what was there before. So, that's just, I don't know if we want to insist on that, or I don't know how strongly people feel about that.
I'm fine with the application as it is.
Well, I have, after this discussion about sign size and limitations and the public comment, I think I also have an idea that maybe we could specify what the, so there's two signs, a top sign and a bottom sign. Maybe we could specify the top sign shall not exceed what this one is, and the bottom sign shall not exceed, you know, the one foot by six foot. Maybe we could just say that, you know, and then, and then, and then there's clarity. It's in the record that way. And then also, if someone else rents the spa, a third party somehow, I mean, literally third party rents the space, there will be, you know, no room for a sign, because the whole space is taken up by that. So what is the, what is the dimension of the top sign? Is it four foot by six foot, or... Is it four foot by six foot, or?
Yeah, we actually included the square footages in the first whereas of the resolution.
Yeah, four foot, right, okay.
Six foot by four foot, 24 square foot charter school sign, and a six foot by one foot, six square foot Kinderblast preschool sign is in the first whereas. But I think you could include it as a condition, you know, you could...
But we're approving, we would be approving what is in the resolution, so anything different than that...
That's right. But I mean, you could, yes.
Add it in again somewhere.
I'm just saying it's already in there, but if it makes you feel more comfortable, you can conclude another condition that states that that's the maximum for the two signs.
Right, well, we could do that if we said the last whereas, and let's see, it could say, subject to the applicant's compliance with the foregoing and the following conditions. Then we incorporate that those above whereas is...
Subject to the foregoing, okay.
We did a lot in contracts, it's real sneaky, and then, oh boy, what hit them, okay.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
So as I move that we approve resolution number 2019-16 for a freestanding monument sign for Ross Valley Charter School and Kinderblast Preschool at 102 Marinade Drive, as the resolution has been amended, to incorporate the whereas is.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed?
I abstain.
Motion carries. There is a 10-day appeal process with a $500 fee.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone need a break, or you want to keep going? Five-minute break? Okay, ready for item number three?
So it's agreed, and we're ready to adjourn? No, just, sorry. Item three, okay. This involves an ongoing discussion, looking at possible ordinance amendments in the Hill area residential development, in terms of their requirements as applicable, or potentially applicable, to the planned development district, upland residential, and single-family residential master plan zoning districts. And your commission reviewed this for the first time at the August meeting, and as usual, had very on-point comments, and staff took the time between the two meetings to research and respond to those, as you can see in your staff report. And I'll just briefly summarize those, if we can get into more detailed discussion as your commission starts to discuss it as well. The first had to do with applicability triggers, and this one was particularly on point because it pointed out a, kind of a hole in the existing HRD requirements, insofar as it referred to a general plan map that isn't in our current general plan. As near as we can tell, the HRD regs date back to the mid-1970s, and the, of course, most recent general plan was adopted in 2012 and 2015 for the housing element. And so some things didn't transfer over, and there wasn't the deep dive back into the zoning, and so there were some loose threads, and as your commission is aware, sometimes we have to catch up to some of these loose threads. So staff felt that this was one of them. In looking at what the gist of that open space map that's referred to as being in the general plan but no longer is, staff concluded that probably the most relevant aspect of it for purposes of HRD triggers has to do with slope stability. And several commissioners, in fact, commented on, if we're looking at objective standards to use to trigger applications being subject to these rather specific and exacting HRD requirements, that slope stability is kind of an important one. So in our staff discussions, we kind of looped back to the fact that when you looked at the open space map, the slope stability discussions there were based directly off the map with the world's longest name, and that's why I put in that, you know, commonly referred to as the Salem House slope stability map, is, that was done by a firm for the county and various jurisdictions, and remains to this date probably the best countywide reference on likely slope stability. Not surprisingly, those maps are based largely on slope. Typically, as you get to a steeper slope, all the things being equal, there's a greater likelihood of running into stability issues, especially if you're putting houses and roads and weight and drainage and things like that. So, in the interest of coming up with a quick solution, because remember, these amendments were supposed to be something that was done quickly, that staff is recommending that we simply proceed with an ordinance that adopts the original slope stability map as an appendancy. And staff has looked at the Salem House map, and concludes that it is possible for applicants to determine whether they're in slope stability zone three or four, those are the two least stable zones on a scale of one to four. Furthermore, and I'll refer to this a little bit later when we get into our mapping discussion, but this could be something that we rubber-sheet when we get into our mapping, so that we have something that's on a GIS layer, and any applicant or interested party could be very specific about, oh, okay, it's within three or four, and therefore, I, you know, I'm subject to this trigger. Certainly, staff would use it in that manner. So, that was a good catch, and we're proposing that that be incorporated. Other aspects has to do with eliminating 1707-2020D. And what happened here was, again, back in the day, I think there was some expectation that we're just dealing with large parcels, or, I'm not sure what the gist of it is, and it's frankly, it's not really worth the time to try to determine it. But when you're looking at whether a project has to go through the entire HRD process, or whether there's an option to go through the use permit process, staff feels that, given the minimum lot size, and the fact that we have determined that many, many parcels don't meet minimum lot sizes, under the current ordinance, you would be required to go through an HRD process, which kind of doesn't make sense, because the HRD is specifically oriented towards slope parcels, and that there are flat parcels that don't meet minimum lot sizes that are in the zone that would otherwise be required for the HRD. So we're suggesting that 1707-2020D be eliminated, so it no longer talks about minimum lot size. So those are two changes that don't eliminate any protections, eliminate a burden, get rid of a loophole right now that would really call into question the applicability of the HRD, if somebody were to really push it. And, so those are good changes. In terms of, another question had to do with the five-acre minimum, again, looking at the genesis of the PDD zoning in 1973, it's likely, will we, for example, know that none of the suggested PDD parcels in our current housing element were thought of as housing receiver sites in '73? So, they're still not zoned PDD, but at that time, it's likely that all the PDD zone parcels were five acres or more in size. So I think that's the genesis of that. And then finally, and this ties into my next set of comments about the work program, when we look, a cheat sheet was recommended, and it's informative to look at this attachment D, because what it shows is kind of how the state legislation really directly impacts the town's heretofore assumed process, as reported previously. If you've got projects in the PDD zone, or indeed, for any housing development proposed in a heretofore undeveloped parcel, you have state regulations that severely limit or eliminate the town's discretionary review, and furthermore, state that you have to let a developer know upfront with already adopted provisions what their submittal requirements are. And so what you see is, in our cheat sheet here, is how there's a three-phase submittal process envisioned in the PDD zone, for the PDD zone, and you don't get into things like surveys of the property until you're in the second phase. Well, that doesn't fly, because that's not an initial submittal requirement. So, the nice thing about having the PDD, or, excuse me, the HRD trigger, and I know this is jargon for anybody who hasn't been studying this, and interrupt me if I'm kind of leading you astray with the jargon, but for now requiring an HRD review for PDD parcels, you get that survey requirement upfront. So that's a biggie, because it gives you the accuracy in the details, the slope, et cetera. So this is, again, closing kind of a loose thread, mangling the metaphor there, but it's addressing initial submittal requirements. Now, another thing that you can see from the cheat sheet is how much qualitative information is currently imbued in the PDD zone, and this is where we just get crushed, or would get crushed by a developer, because it has to be an objective development standard, or it doesn't exist. So, that's where we need to start the process of pivoting towards objective development standards, and again, I will talk about this in my work program for the upcoming year. Suffice to say that jumping out of the general requirements in a PDD zone is a slope density standard, which your commission and the council recognize the important need for, despite opposition by some people who felt that, you know, it was enabling development, and it was already developed, yada, yada. But the idea being is that if you have a steep slope now, you basically get a density of one unit per 10 acres. So, whereas previous to this adoption of this zoning change, you know, the sky's the limit, because the town didn't, does not have a maximum residential zoning density. So, it's, we now have that for the PDD zones, which the properties that are left in the town to be developable, the vacant parcels, are largely the PDD zones. I mean, there's a couple of upland residential parcels, obviously, we're going to be talking about one of those when we get into our work program, but those things are already pretty well captured by fairly low-density standards for residential development. So, that's kind of where we left it. Staff is comfortable with the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance. They did go a little bit wider than initially contemplated, and that, again, is in response to some really good analysis by your commission, and recognizing that there were some loopholes that needed to be closed, and items that need to be addressed, and, you know, one fairness issue. So, that concludes my presentation, and we're here to take comment and answer questions.
Anyone have questions to staff?
Well, in that cheat sheet, the one with the page that is attachment D, the first page, I would just, I don't know if we're changing this at all, but where it says, "Under master development plan, the survey of the property showing existing features," I would just like to add, "by a licensed surveyor." We do have other language like that, "in preliminary development plan, by a team of licensed professionals," and just, "by a licensed surveyor" would be the only change I'd make, and that would follow into, you know, that's all. It might only go to the cheat sheet, I'm not sure, but if it gave it...
With the trigger, that's, would, you know, because now we're pulling it into the HRD requirements, if you look at the top requirement, it does have that. So with those changes, even though the PDD language wouldn't necessarily change, it does say, "by a licensed surveyor." So that's, you know, you got the slope, you go over to HRD, HRD says, "this is what you have to submit."
Any other questions for staff, Mimi?
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for all the hard work on this. Did you locate the CD of the old maps?
No, we don't have a CD. I think we have some paper, I think we looked at, we have these big paper maps.
I brought them.
Ooh!
But I'm asking about the CD.
Well, we do have a CD, but I don't think it has all of them.
Yeah.
All right, just so you know, the Open Space Committee at one point had a number of different members of the Open Space Committee, including probably me, had copies of these CDs. I'm going to bring these maps down. I'm not, well, I don't want to get into my opinions until after public comment, but, you know, without comparing the landslide hazard zone map that you've identified against the one that used to be in the general plan, I have concerns about just replacing that one for that one. I would want to evaluate the differences before we did that.
Other questions to staff? Go ahead.
Just a language thing, under 1707-2020B, where it says Rudolph G. 1976, if we're going to do this, I mean, now that Mimi's brought this up, maybe we're not, but I would say, which is incorporated herein by this reference? And then we can, then we actually, you know, sort of legal language to incorporate it, if we're going to do that.
So I have some questions. We're not including the RMS in this zone, and also, just looking at the draft language, you know, when we get to that point, we've got UR, but we don't have it broken out into UR7, UR10, like we do with the RS ones. So when we get to that point, it should be consistent, so it's clear what it's applying to. But my other question is, have we, and it kind of goes to that RMS that you don't have listed, have we looked at all the individual zoning sections and marry those up with what you're doing to this one? Because each of those, like RMS has language about the HRD permit. They all do. So I guess my question is, and we're not covering RMS here in this, so have we made sure that what is in those individual sections marries up with what you're doing here, and that we don't need to go to some of those and make any changes?
We'll double-check, but our preliminary analysis indicated that those are all included, so we're in good shape.
So then, that would go back to including those that we haven't included in here, like RMS?
With the, just a quick response on RMS, we only have one parcel in town that's RMS, and it's fully developed. So that's where, it's kind of like, yeah, we could include it, but it would never be required because, you know... required because, you know, it's got 53 units under construction right now.
Right, we only have one RMS now, but it is a zone. We could conceivably have more, and to not take this opportunity to match everything up is a missed opportunity.
That's a good point.
Any other questions? Any comments from the public?
Wait, can I make sure I understand what you just said? So are you, I think I understand what you're saying, that if we're going to do this to some of the zones, like in the RS6 zone, there's language about if you're substandard, you need a use permit or an HRD. So you're saying that since it references the HRD, that all this language should be included in all the residential zones?
No, what I'm saying is that in each of those zones, like the RMS zone, where it speaks to, you may either need a use permit, or you may need an HRD permit, that it has language in there about slope and everything else in there. So I want to make sure that what is in those matches up with anything we're doing to the HRD one, so everything fits.
In other words, you want a consistency among the triggers. So as you go through these various residential zoning districts, like you said, I forget what your term was, but basically, it's just consistency.
Marry 'em up.
Yeah.
So just consistency amongst the triggers?
Yeah, for each zone.
So if the HRD itself says one thing about slope and percentages, and RMS has something totally different, then that doesn't work. So just reviewing, making sure that we include the RMS in those, but making sure that everything makes sense.
When we come back with the actual ordinance at the next meeting, we'll make sure that we've looked at that and we're comfortable, you know, with that consistency and comprehensiveness.
And then another just question, if we change two different maps, using a different map as a standard, like the one you mentioned, would that be something that we would incorporate into the next revision of the general plan, like we've done? I mean, I'm just throwing these questions out there, like we did with the prior general plan with the maps, and/or would this be something that we would, if we go to that, we would also have it up on the town's website?
I don't know that we would actually dive into the level of detail of saying, "this is a particular map that looks at slope stability." We might. One of the nice things about the prior general plan is it kind of had that aspect and other aspects in its maps. So likely, we would look at things like hazards and slope and flood zones or something, maybe come up with a hazards map and have a number of factors. I mean, one of the nice things when we get into the work program and what's going on there is that we're going to have GIS products for the first time. So what that says is, once we have a, you know, accurate to within, I don't know, six inches maps of the entire town, we can start to manipulate those to deliver whatever data product we want. So whether it's, here's the Salem House slope stability information, here's the fire hazard rating, et cetera, et cetera, you know, let's just plop those layers on, and if we want to create a map that, you know, shows four things at once, we can make that decision when we do our general plan update. But we can certainly capture that information one way or another.
Okay, I think we're in discussion mode, so.
Did we not have any public comments?
We did not have any public comments. You want to discuss?
Close the public hearing.
I thought I did, I'm sorry. I closed the public hearing and bringing it back to the commission. Mimi?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I worked on the revised general plan, and there was a retreat amongst a variety of people that had worked on that. And because I had been involved in both the revisions to the open space element and the conservation element, I was particularly interested in the beautiful maps in both those elements of the old general plan. And a lot of people argued that we should just get rid of them and get new digital maps. My vague recollection is that, well, I really feel that we shouldn't dispense with those historical maps unless and until we actually have replacements for them. And there are a significant number of them that we don't have replacements for. And my recommendation to this body is going to be for us to pursue amending the general plan to add those maps back in. And I will commit to this body, that I will, see if I can find the discs where we had all these maps scanned and presented in digital form on CDs that the open space, many members of the open space committee had, Ryan O'Neal had them, Jack Judkins had them. And I'll go see if I can reach out to those folks who might have better organizational skills than me to see if they have them. But I would like, because we can amend the general plan up to four times a year, to see us add literally all those digital maps as attachments to the end of the general plan, like appendices, like, here's the 1974 maps, appendix 1974 map 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, you know, something like that, and just have the digital versions of them, you know, maintained in a historical institutional memory kind of way as digital attachments to that document. So that if this is the, you know, I don't know if you guys went through the whole code and found every reference to every old general plan, or if this is just by happenstance, you found this one and you want to correct this one, because it seems to me if there's others in there, we need to have these maps memorialized in the general plan. So that's my two cents.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. We don't want to dispense with historical maps. I'm hearing this for the first time, that the old maps aren't incorporated in the new general plan, which to me is a disturbing thing. So I totally agree with that, what Mimi just said.
Other comments?
I'm just confused because are there maps, have we been talking about maps in this particular report, or is that just something that came up on the side?
Well, if you look at the language in 17072020 under B, what it says currently in this red line that they're proposing to change is, "the property falls within a landslide hazard zone, as shown on exhibit 3, open space element of the Fairfax general plan." And that's referring to the landslide hazard map from the old general plan. So what Ben and Linda are recommending is we cross that out and refer instead to this California Division of Mines and Geology map. And that's what I'm objecting to. I don't want to do that.
Oh, I see.
With one clarification, it's not so much that we want to eliminate it, it's that it doesn't exist, and that what we're recognizing is, right now, we think we have an HRD trigger, and it's arguable whether it does. So when somebody's doing, on a 35%, sort of 30% slope or more, 50 cubic yards of dirt removal, you've got a clause that says, "if it has that amount of grading and it shows up on the general plan open space map." So that's where, you know, in the interest of having something that we believe the general plan open space stability or landslide potential diagrams were based on, we can simply adopt that in the zoning ordinance. I'm not arguing against looping back into an analysis of the general plan to see, I would be surprised if the general plan referred to those older maps in a meaningful way, because that would be kind of a concordance issue where, you know, all of a sudden, you're referring to something that they somehow forgot to adopt. I could definitely see how this happened in the zoning ordinance, because they never caught up to the zoning changes that would typically follow on the heels of the general plan adoption. The other aspect, I would say, is because we are doing a visual resources digitization that will, for the first time, clearly show if, you know, if we decide to bring up those layers, all the parcels in town, the town boundaries. I mean, one of the things they've already determined is that some portion of the town's historic maps are off on the ground by as much as 1,200 feet. And it's very, very difficult to determine, for example, where the town boundaries are. In many instances, the roads aren't shown, some of the maps may have some outline of parcels, but when you're trying to identify ridge lines.
Sorry. You're distracting.
Yeah.
No, no, I, there it is.
Maybe we can get that on the camera. But, you know, it's really hard to see town boundaries, you have to make assumptions even about things like where Sir Francis Drake is. And so, you know, it's an incredible product for the time, and certainly used the leading firm that was doing overlays in paper form at that time. And what I'm suggesting is that when we evolve to a digital product, we'll have something that's more accurate and more detailed, and that your commission will have ample opportunity to compare the historic paper map.
Let me ask a question on the historical paper maps, like this one that Mimi brought out. Is that based on the same kind of study that your reference would be based on?
I would be premature to say that I'm very confident that when you look at landslide elements of that map, that paper document, that it is exactly, it syncs exactly up with the stability map, but we will research that. I believe it does. There would be no reason that it wouldn't, because, again, even to this day, the Salem House map is sort of the reference that's used throughout the county by all jurisdiction as sort of a rough guesstimate of, oh, gee, this has a potentially unstable slope, go out and get a geotechnical report and determine whether or not, in fact, it does. So back at the time when we were doing this for the last general plan, that would more than likely have been what we referred to.
Mimi, do you?
When I started here, I was told that our slope stability map was based on the Salem House map, because the town didn't have the wherewithal to go out and do test borings and figure out soil, so that's why I was.
And the name of the folks who drew the map is on it, and they are highly respected, from what I understand, in this field, obviously, for the time. They were ahead of their time. And I'm not suggesting that we don't take advantage of new technologies. I think we should. We could refer to both maps, for example. We don't have to have an either-or. What I'm concerned about is losing the expertise that went into drawing these very specific town maps, because a lot of care went into them that is specific to our town, and I want to honor that. Now, when we were working on the general plan, we talked about updating them, and obviously, that's a project that we've continued with the mapping that you're working on. So again, you know, the perfect way forward is to have the historic and merge it with the new and come up with, you know, the next generation, right? So I think it can work. I just don't want to simply replace the old with the new. I want to, if we want to, until the new maps are finished, refer to them both, that would make me happier. I don't think that just because we adopted a new general plan, that the old general plan fails to exist. Correct me if you think I'm wrong, Phil, but in terms of legally, when we have an ordinance that refers to a map that is currently not in our current general plan, but did exist in our old general plan, I would think that we would continue to read that as referring to the map and the old general plan, whether or not it had been subsequently superseded by a new general plan, until we change the ordinance, adopt a new map, or whatever.
All right, otherwise, you have ambiguities created. But I can tell you, so old maps, you can't, I was once reading a deed that had so much detail in it, but it also had a description of some surveyors who were in San Francisco at the moment of the earthquake in 1906. And they did an original survey. And then this earthquake happened, and they said that the earth, they described it, they saw it, they were there, that the sand was moving like waves in the ocean, is what they said. So they had to redraw the whole darn thing afterwards. That was, you know, one of the minor issues from the earthquake of 1906. So there was a relevance to the original and a relevance to the later one, because the earth moved. And so whatever was looked at for this old map was relevant at the time. And if we have a newer map, we might notice some differences that might show us some problems or issues that we otherwise wouldn't recognize just looking at the new map.
Yeah, and I want to say that I respect the documents and the effort and the information, the knowledge that's reflected in that. And in fact, one of the charges with this new visual resources digital document that we have is making sure that it's accurate to that map. Now, to the extent that maybe a ridge line has moved over 50 feet, because, you know, they didn't have GIS in the old days, so they couldn't just go up to a satellite and say, you know, this is where we are on planet Earth, that will be part of the conversation with the commission. But I assure you that the intent is to be true to the data that that represents. The challenge right now is to get this, you know, you said ambiguity, and that's probably the perfect description, because it could be argued different ways. And what we're trying to do is simply say that we want to make sure that if you're in an unstable area, as defined by the best information we have, or you're doing more than, you know, the town says 50 cubic yards of excavation, if you're more than 30% slope, that by golly, you're subject to HRD. And right now, it's ambiguous, it's arguable. If we get the digital product, or, excuse me, if we, not the digital, jumping ahead, if we get the Salem House map referenced, which we can do with this zoning change, recognizing that when we get to the next item, we have a work program, and I'm happy to take direction from your commission about looping back to things like the suitability for open space map, which has, I guess, the, and say, we're going to digitize that, too. Because one of the nice things, again, is you get this GIS map, and it's, you know, pinned down and geo-referenced is the term they use. And then we can start to say, okay, let's bring this into the 21st century and figure out where everything is, which is going to be important for looking, you know, one of the reasons I've been kind of banging the drum on, okay, we need to digitize it, we need to digitize it, is we're going to be dealing with Miranda Heights, which deals with ridge line areas, and we need to know where the boundaries are, so that when we're doing our alternatives analysis, you know, one of the things we likely will do is say, okay, what happens if you create a building site that's outside the ridge line area? So we need to know where the boundary of that is. Right now, that's, you know, we do have a ridge line, our visual resources map, so is the ridge line, but again, you just kind of scratch your head and say, you know, where exactly is that? Well, I'm going to be coming back to your commission with that, and, you know, we're going to figure that out, and we're going to make a recommendation for incorporation of that digital product. And then we can flip it over and use it to review Miranda Heights and define boundaries as they relate to this is in, this is out. So let's, you know, when we get to that, let's talk about what we do with those maps as part of our pending work program for the next, you know, work program, period.
Are you comfortable with that, Mimi?
Yeah, I am.
Can I have a follow-up comment? Thank you, Ben. I was going to say the same thing about that the map that you reference is considered the reference standard that is used for, so I think, and I think Mimi's comment about that both could be referenced, I think, would be. that both could be referenced, I think, would be, is a good point. One question, and it's probably unlikely, because, could it be possible that there could be, I think there's been like some property, wasn't there like a property on Wood Lane that once had like a landslide on it and somebody wants to develop it with?
It's already in the building.
Right, but could it be possible that a property like that, that may have had a historic landslide on it, wouldn't appear in the slope stability map? I mean, it would seem unlikely, but I'm just wondering, is there a chance?
Both the sites on Wood Lane that slid, show up as unstable, the back of the sites that slid, show up as unstable on the Salem House map?
Right, I mean, I was just using that as an example.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, it's possible. I'm less concerned, given the limited number of parcels that are undeveloped or barely developed, that we would miss that because, again, a lot of that, you just look at the slope and you look at, you know, three and four, those are the two more unstable designations in that Salem House map. And it pretty much syncs with that. One of the things we do like is to get the real information where they do the test borings and they say, oh yeah, this is, you know, 40 feet down to competent bedrock or something like that, you know, it's slide prone. People in the field can look at a hillside and go, oh, that's hummocky, you know, that's slump before. So, that type of information, that kind of is the next step beyond the Salem House product. You know, again, we have two great documents for their time, but in terms of being the final word on it, no, it just says, go get more information. And it's possible that something could be a two, that it actually, when they do the test borings, triggers that. And, you know, again, getting, looking at our work program, when we start to get into the objective development standards, and this has a lot to do with PDD, but it's other areas, one of the things we know we're going to have to do is take whatever the, every jurisdiction in the county is paying into to get this great firm to develop these objective standards countywide, a kind of a workbook. We know we need to get a more specific product for Fairfax, and so we will be ensuring that one way or another, we get additional work that says, for example, slopes. I will be also working with the group that's directing the objective development standards work product to make sure that we're not just talking about downtowns, that somehow we try to get up on slopes. And if it's not in the main work product, it'll be in an optional additional work product for Fairfax because I think it's really important that we address the hillside areas. Those are the ones that haven't been developed heretofore because they're so challenging. But now with property values, we're seeing people coming in with projects, so we need to retain our local review. So, anyway.
Any other comments for staff or questions? If not, you're bringing this, you're bringing this back. So, from my perspective, the two things would be to include the RMS, to break up the UR, and to make sure we've married all the different zoning sections against the HRD. Does anybody else have any recommendations or things for when they bring this back? Mimi?
Yeah, I'd like to figure out a way to keep the reference to the open space map, maybe by referring to the year of the general plan.
Why don't we talk to our attorneys and find out how we could do that? It might be a little bit tricky to do in a zoning change only, to take what was a general plan document and say, oh, that former general plan diagram is now part of our current zoning ordinance. But we'll explore that and see if we can, we can get that in there.
Anything else?
Yeah, just a, just a little point. I mean, in 17112020A, it talks about five acres or more, da-da-da, legally constituted corporation or partnership, but there are also LLCs used for real estate. So, do you mean to leave out LLCs?
No.
I mean, there's series LLCs, there's a lot of permutations of that, but maybe just say LLCs as well.
Limited liability companies. We'll throw in the LLC.
Well, it says corporation or partnership, but there's the LLC. I don't know when this language was drafted, just a suggestion.
All right, thank you. So, on to priorities.
You know, this is one of those good references to see where we stand in terms of the prior discussions and what actually took up most of our time. And as noted in the staff report, we have been working on a number of the items that were originally discussed. The only reason, I think, why the Miranda Heights subdivision wasn't already being on the boil, as it were, is because it simply wasn't ready to be moved to that burner. But in terms of, yeah, so referencing back, you know, the things that we have been working on in the current work program, obviously, maximum house size was something that the town council determined they needed to address and your planning commission worked on and we, we did work on it. Cannabis regulations, 22 meetings, what can you say? But, you know, everybody else in the county, you know, has kind of been ducking that whole issue, so I guess, you know, it takes what it takes. I will say, as we roll into our current work program for the next year or year and a half, you know, whether we're talking about 2020 as a calendar year or as a fiscal year, that, as noted, the cannabis regulations is only step one. Now, we're moving into the town council adopting a procedure for reviewing applications and then going right back to your commission with applications. And judging by the phone calls that we continue to get, we'll have more than one applicant, even if we only have one site. No, I'm just kidding. Because there's this industry out there that wants to do business. So, that's going to be challenging because it's one thing to have general regulations, it's another thing entirely to have a site. And I anticipate, based on the type of discussions and debates that have occurred in the county where they've tried to do stuff, that Fairfax will see its share of controversy and detailed discussions, plural, when we get to that stage. So, that's coming up with your commission in the new year. So, that's the first thing. Miranda Heights, or excuse me, just looking at the last one, objective development standards, as noted, we did get through with Alacrity, the changes that, for the first time, related slope to parcel density, development density, which was a huge thing because, you know, if you're more than 30% slope now, you have to have a 10 acre, well, you get one unit per 10 acres. So, I think that took, got rid of a real loophole in our ability to control the density of development on some of our steeper slope PDD zone parcels. And moving, I'll get into the proposed work program as we deal with objective development standards in a moment. Miranda Heights, it's anticipated at this point that we'll be going to the town council in December for approval of the EIR contract. We're kind of just working out some details.
You mean October?
No, December.
For the approval on the contract?
Oh, excuse me, November. Did I say December? I meant November.
You said December.
Yeah, not October.
Right.
November. So, there's just some, some details that have to be worked out and we're in the process of doing so. What happens after that is, this will probably be in the new year, starting in the new year as well, we're going to have a scoping session. It's not required under SEQA law, but I think it's incumbent on the town to open this up to the public for their input. We know, you know, with any topic, there's so much historical knowledge that we'll be doing that and your commission will be chairing that. We will also be doing kind of a concurrent merits evaluation while the consultant is working on their EIR. And this will be things like house design, building location with respect to views and things like that. So, it doesn't necessarily rise to the level of, oh, is this a significant impact? But it certainly has everything to do with, you know, what we were just talking about with HRD and stuff like that. You know, we have plenty of triggers that we'll get into with that. So, that's going to be a big, big work program item. And one of the things I'm requesting of your commission is that you strongly consider dedicated meetings for Miranda Heights. I think it would be unfair to other applicants to have this room packed with people who are here for one product and will probably talk about it for hours and hours and hours and then take, you know, somebody who's got a, you know, conversion of a downstairs and try to do that at the same meeting. I mean, do you do that first, just to get them out of there, or do you make them sit for four hours, you know, until midnight? Furthermore, if we have a regular schedule of dedicated meetings for that project, I think we can probably put it on a timer and just say, so we're not wearing out your commission, that, you know, we'll, we'll have two-hour meetings or three-hour meetings or something like that so that, you know, we go as far as we can go because we know it's going to be multiple meetings. And I want to make sure that your commission, you know, is okay with however long it takes to go through that review. There you go. Yeah. We'll get a fresh pot for every meeting. How's that?
And so, Ben, that scoping session would be November sometime?
Probably December. That's what I was thinking about for December. So, in order to.
And then, on a monthly basis, moving forward, we'd have something almost every month?
Yeah, that's what I anticipate. Yes. So, in 2020, we'll just be, we'll be doing two a month, basically. And, you know, I apologize, according to Linda, this has happened in the past, there's a precedent for it. And we'll, oh, there we go. So, like I said, I don't want to do midnight meetings. I think that, you know, people's attention spans and derriers usually work in sync, so after about three hours, you know, both are pretty numb, sorry. But the idea is, let's, let's, let's just keep working in a, in a kind of a consistent manner.
And I know you suggested either the second or fourth Thursday of the month, right?
Right. So, you know, when we get into your commission comments, if you have preliminary ideas about what your preference would be in that regards, I'm happy to get that. So, those are the, and something I did here too, is I also said, how many meetings each item took, you know, cannabis 22, max house eight. So, what happened is, we did 43, not really meetings, but considerations, I guess you would say, or agenda items. And that kind of gives you an idea of what the bandwidth of staff is to work on that. And it may be that we hire a project manager for Miranda Heights or something like that, but it's not really at the level of triage, but it just simply says that, you know, you start out with 319 work program items in the general plan, remember that review we did? And we boiled it down to like a dirty dozen, and then of that, we didn't get to all 12. And, you know, things popped up. And so, that's, the reality is, is that you just keep distilling it down and you say, highest priority, you know, what do we have to do? We have to do Miranda Heights and, you know, some of the other things. And actually, this was a discussion item, but because my sense is that the council is going to want to do this, I might as well throw that in the other zoning amendments discussion and talk about it now, which is, it's been brought to the town's attention most recently in San Antonio, that where you have town-owned properties and they have a zoning designation of residential, that, that may pop up in the town's regional housing needs assessment counts. And so, the idea is, even though, you know, San Antonio had to pursue it because they had like 60 acres of single-family zoned land that was intended for a park, was used for a park, but guess what? You know, BCDC, no, not BCDC, One Bay Area was going, you've got, you know, dozens of acres of single-family. I think we're just going to look at that as a housing site. And so, you know, they had to address that quickly. You know, this is this whole, you know, state telling jurisdictions, you shall produce housing and if it's zoned for that housing, you know, you're going to, somehow that's going to show up in your requirements. And so, the idea is, when we did our, and Linda did some great quick work on this, we're so lucky to have.
Thank you, Linda.
Great staff here.
And we'll be talking about that with the next item, right?
Well, I just wanted to say that this is, I would say, consider this part of your work program item. So, I'll go into more detail, but.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think this is one of those conceptual things. It's like, you know, I have a sense that we're going to be working on that per the town council's direction. Other items, in addition to the, well, the odds program, so going forward, let's see, commercial cannabis? Yeah. Objective development standards is, again, the state changed the ground rules. If it's not an objective standard, you know, that basically you can tell at a glance, this is what you have to do, it doesn't exist. And you have to have it, all the information upfront. And, you know, we've been trying to address this mandate from the state ever since. I mean, just a quick editorial aside, there's a reason why steep parcels in Marin haven't been developed to date. You know, they're so constrained with landslides, et cetera, et cetera. And so, for the state to come in and say, you know, you better tell a developer exactly what objective requirements there are upfront, or they could just propose whatever they want, is essentially how it works out. It's just not the way you should do it. But, okay, getting back to reality. So, all the jurisdictions in Marin are coming together to put in applications for grants available under Senate Bill 2. You know, it's an amazing thing. They actually did take with one hand and give this opportunity to get grant money to do planning studies, which is almost unprecedented. And so, all the jurisdictions in Marin, you know, planning directors get together and we say, well, you know, why don't we hire a consultant who's really good, who can give us a heck of a lot more bang for buck and come up with a workbook? And then also have additional, optional additional items. And so, that's what we're doing. And when we talk about optional additional items, you know, Fairfax obviously is a very nuanced place. And so, we know we're going to be looking at historic preservation. We know that we need to look at things like slope, things that may or may not be part of the mainstream form-based standards, that's kind of more of a downtown thing, but we need to make sure that that's incorporated in somehow. And so, your commission will be part and parcel of that work. This is going to be coming this next 12 months, you know, with a expected deliverable date in December of 2020. So, the idea is, we'll be having meetings to talk about objective development standards and whether it's looking at the planned development district and all our qualitative standards and trying to morph those into objective standards, whether it's looking at the downtown and saying, what's the historic character of that? And your commission and staff have discussed, you know, work products we hope were forthcoming. The good news is that we'll get those work products, but it'll be in conjunction with this effort. So, those are all the things that we're going to be doing vis-à-vis objective development standards. Your commission also knows probably better than staff because I haven't been at any of these frontline meetings, but it's kind of a challenging thing because on one hand, we're trying to retain local discretion and, and control over development. But on the other hand, when we develop these standards, it's going to be kind of a playbook for developers to come in and say, you know, here it is, we think it matches, you tell us within 30 days whether it does or not. And if they do comply, we're going to have to expedite that review. So. So it's gonna be a lively time talking about objective development standards. And to further focus that conversation, I can say that the, the parcel Poncha Villa site, those people would like to have a workshop with your planning commission, which I think is probably a pretty good idea, just to kind of go over some of the parameters of what they're very preliminarily talking about. I mean, they're, they're smart developers. They don't wanna spend a ton of money and just run into a brick wall. Was it 10 units?
Yeah, 10 units.
10 units?
Raisin, still new structure.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna keep the duplex on the site, but the existing restaurant building would be torn down and rebuilt. Now, one thing is they've done another part, part project. It's on Centerfell on Fourth Street on the West End. It's that new white building. It's a three-story. This, this one wouldn't be three stories. Yeah. What's it closest to, Linda?
It's by Johnny's. It's across the street from Johnny's Donuts.
There you go. Johnny's Donuts. So check that out. They, they seem to be- They seem to be serious developers, you know, not, I mean, people that, that would be good to have this conversation with. This will help us to kind of get an idea when we move into the objective development standards realm. And form-based standards is, you know, these people get it. I mean, if you look at that building they got built, I mean, it has all the new urbanist stuff, but so that'll be a kind of a little focus site. And, and then we look at objective standards and kind of go from there. So big work product, hard to predict how many, how many meetings that'll take. I wouldn't be surprised if it's more than 10 before your commission. And I hope that the Opticos, this nationally recognized firm that's doing the countywide workbook for objective standards, you know, is there for all of them with our conversations so that we get what Fairfax wants. Other thing, mapping. Okay, I think I already heard from your commission that you want the suitability for open space with all the layers to be folded into the work, upcoming work products that staff directs, this GIS person that we have hired to do work for the town. And I'm very happy to do that. Just get confirmation from your commission when we get that direction. The first thing we're gonna be working on is the visual resources map because that includes, as I said, the ridgeline areas. We need that to really get into the nitty-gritty of Miranda Heights. So that's, that's another thing is, it's gonna be challenging because that doesn't exactly line up with when you take a good geo-referenced aerial photo and you say, oh, here's the ridge, and it's not gonna be in the same location. So we're gonna have to, they call it rubber sheeting, where you just kind of say, okay, here's the ridge thread and this is exactly where this is, and this is where the little green ridgeline corridor should go. And then we take it from there. Other elements, inclusionary housing account, the town currently doesn't have an inclusionary housing ordinance. That's one of the reasons why Miranda Heights doesn't have to have any affordable housing as part of its requirements. The state has said that from now on, if you adopt inclusionary housing, you have to make sure that it doesn't make a developer's product, project infeasible. So the good news is that once again, the county the jurisdictions in the county have said, hey, either A, we have to adopt inclusionary housing standards, because, you know, we want people to put in affordable housing, or we need to update ours. So we have multiple jurisdictions going in on an SB2 grant. And the, the time, timing on that is probably a little bit slower than the objective development standards. You know, we've already had San Anselmo experience one of these, here's the building permit process at, you know, SB 35 projects where you have limited local review. So that's the highest priority is to make sure we have something we can give a developer. But that's coming down the turnpike. Accessory dwelling units. The state keeps changing the regulate, the rules, you know, they keep passing bills. Plus, I would like to consider some Fairfax nuances oriented towards a means-based accessory dwelling units, maybe have some sort of incentives for individuals. Perhaps assistance. It's, it's kind of in a conceptual stage, but that's gonna be coming to your commission probably this summer. So that's, that's a work product that I, I'd like to, well, I'm gonna be applying for a grant and I need to look at the timing on that because I want it to sync with the, anything else we have to do just to be consistent with state regulations, but that's coming up for your commission. Other housing regulations, you know, the state, they do about 15 housing bills a year now. And it's really difficult to figure out how it affects jurisdictions.
You know, I've been wanting to ask if there's any way we could get a little cheat seat or, you know, some kind of a summary of the most relevant
Yeah.
housing regs that affect us or the major, something.
Yeah.
It's, it's very difficult, as you say.
Yeah, the League of California Cities, as the commissioners went down, does a great job on that. But I will talk to BBK. I mean, they did that wonderful presentation in June of 18 that kind of did the overview of what we were facing. And like I said, yeah, now there's, I mean, I just look at them and just kind of, it, it's crazy.
It might be good first, though, to look at what's already available on the league? If there's anything there that's-
Yeah.
...available to-
Okay. That's a, that's a great comment is, is, we'll, we'll see what league products are out there. I know they do, they try to do a brochure. It's been a little while since they did their last one, so we'll do that. Other zoning amendments, I guess it's mostly to say that, you know, things like we had talked about, it'd be good to update our zoning to allow for uncovered parking. Or at least discuss allowing uncovered parking. It's a great idea. I just don't see us having the bandwidth in the foreseeable future to really dive into that. So, I mean, it's there, but it's, you know, we gotta get through a bunch of really high priorities first. So that's staff's presentation. We have the attachments of the town council and the planning commission discussions from 2018 and we're here to get your input and direction.
Anyone have questions for staff?
I have some comments just about the maps. You know, I'm not suggesting that you add more to the GIS project in terms of additional mapping until you have had a chance to evaluate the maps that are, you know, hopefully I or you, somebody can find the CD. And then I think that staff should take the time to review the existing maps and maybe scope out a game plan for amending the general plan to add these historic maps just as attachments, as a sort of paperwork task, thereby preserving them. And, and then maybe develop recommendations as to whether or not one or more of them ought to be further incorporated into the GIS project. You know, I don't wanna predetermine, oh, this map is something you should add to that right now.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, where, where are we right now with the Reno requirements? Are we, are we good?
Fairfax is better than any jurisdiction in Marin because of Victory Village. You know, that's the gift that keeps giving, so.
That puts us over the top, right?
Well, kind of, yes. It, it certainly backed HCD when we had our little phone call with them where, you know, they're, because now they're given enforcement. They're working with the state attorney general. I mean, it's not just information and assistance. It's like, where are you with your housing development? The other thing is, we're likely coming back to your commission next month, if not then, the month after, at the latest with School Street Plaza Livework. So, and that will be-
That's a submittal or just for discussion?
No, submittal. So-
It's a submittal?
Yeah. So that'll be quite a few units with, I, I will say, very, very limited physical changes to the parcel, to the buildings on the parcel. So that's another thing where, you know, we get those units through the process, then, then that'll add to our list of new housing.
Other questions? I have two. Cannabis for the business process, is that gonna come back to us for any review beforehand or that it's gonna be finalized by staff and council?
Yeah, it's, it's identified in the, in the, in the regs as going to the council. So we anticipate we'll be bringing that to your council in, at their October meeting, in fact. We'll be working on that next.
Did either planning or any other, you know, the town manager prepare a map to show those buffer zones that were adopted and where they're physically located? Because I couldn't see those in the attachments to the town council's, you know, first and second readings. The first reading was kind of where they decided what the buffer zones were gonna be. And the second reading was just sort of reflected in written form in the ordinance that was read. I'm asking whether or not there will be a map that shows where the buffer zones extend in the physical property lines?
Yes, those, those actually were attachments and I'll, I'll help. We'll, we'll link you to that. I'll just shoot you an email.
I mean, I saw the attachments in the staff report for the August council meeting. There were like A, B, C, D, E, and F, right? But then they ended up agreeing to one set of buffers for retail and one set of buffers for delivery. And they were defined differently. So there were two buffers really for retail, depending upon how far away it was from a school versus a youth center or whatever. So it, it is not clear to me that just looking at those attached maps, there was anything that I could really rely on as the ultimate decision. And that's what I'm saying. If one of those attachments, A, B, C, D, E, F, is what they ultimately decided on, I just would like that to be pointed out to me.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get you that because that's obviously critical to the discussion. There's two maps and we made the tweaks that were necessary for the final adoption. So we have something that will be the, the buffer maps and I'll, we'll, we'll show you where those are.
Then, um, can you tell me what legislation is changing the ADU? That we have to go back and update it? If not, can you-
If I did, I'd probably be out of, what do they call that? Out of order? That, that's such nitpicky legal lease that Amanda Sharn is coming back and she's our ADU guru. And so she'll bring us up to the minute on what's doing it. That, yeah, I-
So you don't, you're not exactly sure what the-
No.
-legislation is. Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
I got a comment on buffer zones. I happen to be in Massachusetts and there apparently they don't have buffer zones because there was a dispensary and next door it, next door was a K to five school. And there were police standing around and there was a whole huge line of people going into the dispensary publicly. You could just see this. And parents picking up their kids from the school. Right there. Just, just right there. So that's Massachusetts, which you think fairly conservative state. Interesting.
Not really, but how did that strike you, Phil?
It was extremely peaceful. Nobody bothered anybody. And there were a few cops standing around basically telling jokes to each other most of the time. And that was it. And, and it was amazing how calm and peaceful and everything it was. So that's just an interesting comment.
Did you get the feeling that the police were there all the time?
We, we under, we asked, I asked, and the police are there when the dispensary is open.
When it's open?
Right.
Wow. So they dedicate an officer to just stand out there?
Which suggests to me that maybe that's not the best side-by-side land use. I mean, come on, you don't-
No, I, I was totally amazed. You couldn't smell anything or detect anything and you wouldn't know it. Because the dispensary had no sign, which is another clue, but it was interesting to see.
Well, the buffer topic was vetted extensively by your commission, as you know, and by the town council. So I'm sure that the ultimate decision reflects the desires of Fairfax very closely.
So any other questions or comments on priorities? What I forgot to do was open up the public comment period. Is there any comments from the public? You can come on up to the podium.
Hi, Stephanie Hellman, Fairfax resident. Could you elaborate on the grant that you mentioned related to the ADUs?
Through the chair, yes. What's going on is that with all the flurry of housing-related legislation from the state, which is mostly aimed at, you know, specifically reducing local jurisdictions' discretion and ability to deny housing projects. I mean, they say that in the purpose of the legislation. They have also said, hey, we recognize that we're putting this huge burden on local jurisdictions. So in Senate Bill Two, they included funding for local jurisdictions to plan for this housing. And so looking at the funding availability, the planning director's group said, hey, you know what? It would be better since jurisdictions in Marin share a lot in common in terms of, you know, we don't have a lot of opportunity for growth and, and we need to get a lot more tuned up in certain areas. They said, let's all put together a program where we combine our grant requests and pay for a consultant to put together a workbook. And so that's what is occurring is under the auspices of the county of Marin, who's kind of like, you know, riding shotgun on this whole thing. They've put together a project description for this consultant, Opticos. And they're going to be developing an, an, an objective standards workbook. And, and basically going out to jurisdictions, doing outreach, having consultations and, and coming up with something that reflects needs in Marin County. And as part of that description, at my suggestion, because I know that Fairfax is very concerned about this, I said, we need to have optional, optional tasks included in their overall work program so that Fairfax has an opportunity to have one-on-one meetings with this consultant and work on our versions of objective development standards. And I don't know what the ultimate work product will be. That's one of the challenges that we need to go through. But it will be something that will be tailored towards Fairfax.
And is this acknowledging the existing inventory of ADUs in Fairfax? Or looking at the opportunity to build net new ADUs? Or both?
Well, in terms of ADUs, that's, that's, you know, we have objective standards and then we have, which is kind of, it's sort of multifamily oriented. But the accessory dwelling units, it's a separate grant that's, you know, there's gonna be, again, a, a group grant submittal or individual grant submittals going towards one common project. And the things to realize about ADUs is that the state has virtually occupied the field. They've said, look, if AD, accessory dwelling units are within these parameters, size, location on the property, parking or none, depending on its proximity to bus lines, local jurisdictions have no discretion in denying them. So that's why they're popping up all over Marin and we're producing a lot of them in Fairfax. I dare say we're getting a lot of legalization because people are realizing that, hey, the answer is no longer no. And we would just as soon have a legal ADU and go through the process. We also have people proposing them in Fairfax. So we don't know an overall count of the number of second units or ADUs in Fairfax that may have never been permitted. But we do know what we've permitted since the ADU regulations have come into effect.
Okay, thank you. No other public comments? I'm bringing it back. I think we're done with this. I think we're done with this item.
Unless, yeah, unless your commission, oh, that's, fine, thank you.
You're welcome. Next item.
Okay, next item. And this, again, I was sort of dragging this into the work program is you have a really great map product that was done by Linda on a very short timeframe. And what it shows is we have a lot more parcels that are town-owned than we thought. Was it 36 or something like that? And then there's...
That's a number, didn't you attach?
Yeah, and there's, oh geez, did I say 36? Is there really 58?
Yeah.
Oh, God. Okay, I'm sorry.
Fifty-eight parcels?
Fifty-eight town-owned parcels. In addition, there's eight county-owned parcels. Now...
Can I just say one thing? Keeping in mind that the town property at Perry Park and everything, that is actually a bunch of separate parcels, right? So, it can say 52, but it's not necessarily 52 separate pieces of property.
It's parcels, right.
Much like the eight county parcels are really divided into three sites or contained in three sites. So, in any event, so the next step is we evaluate these sites and we figure out what's the current use on them. You can see that there's a whole bunch of them scattered in the RS6 zone. So, that's where this RENA number tabulation might be of interest. And so, then the question is, do we want to, to what extent do we want to change or consider changing not only the zoning but the general plan designation on these parcels so that we're no longer getting kind of pinned down to provide housing potentially or they work towards our housing numbers when we get our RENA, you know, allocation of additional housing? And so, that's what we intend to do is to study these parcels, figure out exactly where they're located, what their current uses are. You know, things like, is there a trail running through them? You know, if there is, then clearly that's open space. Maybe one or two of them would end up being, you know, potential housing site. I'm not saying we want that or they would, but that's, you know, just one of those conversations. So, we will be looking at each of the 58. Oh, sorry, there's multiple in one site. So, it's a lot less than that in terms of discrete sites. But we'll be looking at those sites and coming back with recommendations in terms of zoning amendments if necessary. And insofar as, for example, if you look at the Sky Ranch, Sky Ranch? No, Sky Ranch parcel, that's the one that's kind of horseshoe-shaped in the lower right of your diagram. That one is a UR, you know, upland residential, one unit per 10 acre zoning designation and it's a UR land use designation in our general plan. Clearly, that's not going to be housing. So, that's one where we probably, well, because general plans supersede zoning, we're going to need to change the general plan to some sort of appropriate open space designation concurrent with our rezoning. So, that's another thing we'll be looking at is, do we need to change the general plan on some of these that will never be anything but parks? So, that's it. We're, you know, it was kind of, it started off as sort of a concept, but I think there's a recognition that it's probably a serious enough issue that we need to get cracking on that.
So, questions for staff?
Just a comment that, I mean, I can't tell which properties these are, but if it's in residential zones, that might be an opportunity to get some affordable housing, given that we don't have any funding that we can assist a developer. But if we had a piece of property that could be turned into an affordable unit or two, gives us something.
So, a lot of this land has been dedicated as open space by virtue...
Open space, then it's open space.
Well, so that's the question, right? We own land.
What is it?
And, you know, the open space committee has a map online where we spent a great deal of time identifying what was privately owned undeveloped land, what was publicly owned developed land, what was publicly owned undeveloped land, all sorts of categories. And Linda, you and I should compare notes because in looking at your map, for example, the town-owned Triangle Park behind the Bennett House is not reflected as town-owned and that needs to be there. And so, we need to do some QAQC and compare those maps. People have donated funds to the town and for the purpose of having the town invest in open space parcels. So, some of the land that is undeveloped and owned by the town should not be re-designated even for affordable housing due to, in my mind, the expectation of those donors who provided the funds for the town to acquire the land.
As open space?
As open space or whose prior owners agreed to sell it to the town for a deal in exchange for knowing that that land would be kept as open space. So, I disagree unless there was some historical research done to figure out why we owned a particular piece of land. I would be very hesitant to, yeah, to start identifying housing stock. I think I would rather do the opposite. It's not like I want to fight affordable housing, but as we learned, we are way ahead of everybody else and, but falling maybe a little short of San Anselmo with respect to protection of open space. And so, I would be in support of aggressively identifying properties that are appropriate for changing the zoning. And that Triangle Park behind the Bennett House looks like it'd be one perfect example because it looks like it's RS5 or something. And that one, I think we would totally want to keep as open space.
Very good because I got my list for Marin map and that one didn't pop, so...
I was remiss in also saying that we would need to loop with the open space committee. You know, they're obviously a committee that exists for this purpose. So, they would be part of the discussion and I would be going to a meeting of theirs and having that conversation when we start to get information, detailed information about each of the parcels.
So, questions I have is if we need to amend the general plan, kind of what's entailed in that since we, I'm not sure we've ever done that? And when you do that, does that open you up to having to make the general plan in compliance with any state requirements that may have changed since the last general plan, since our general plan was developed? I mean, I think that's just kind of a good question to get the answer on. Like, once you do that, does it open up to review of everything else to make them current? And then I think the other thing is, I mean, and when you talk about parcels in here, we've got things like Doc Egger that's in residential. Now, when I went back and looked at the old Cessar maps, it's actually on the old map identified with the word park on it, unlike the Herrera, whatever, old Cessar parcels. The clause circle one has no designation, but that would, you know, be another area. But I think one of the questions is, when we look at this, it seems that as we go through this process, we've got two options, right? You've got public domain and you've got open area on there. So, a question I would have, like on public domain, I know, are there any differences kind of with state law? If you have something that's identified as public domain, that makes you open to certain things? I know we have in our code, we've got public domain and we've got the addition of, I think, homeless. So, that would be one question I have. If something's identified as public domain, how is that treated by the state? And then the other piece of that is looking at this and saying, between those two options, you know, what are the differences and what's beneficial to us to try, you know, as we move forward with this to see, you know, as what we're trying to accomplish, which I think is, as Mimi said, you know, saving a lot of that, that area. So, those are my kind of questions and thoughts. Anyone else? So, what's the next steps? Where do you go from here?
We start, we start to develop a map product that we can actually identify parcels. And once we have a comfort level that we've identified all the parcels or at least, you know, have as good as we're going to get in a short period of time, go to the open space committee and start getting their feedback and go back to your planning commission and say, this is preliminarily what we recommend. I mean, all your comments about, you know, what we recommend in terms of a land use designation vis-à-vis the general plan, what we recommend in terms of a zoning designation, you know, here's the merits and things like that. So, you know, it's all very preliminary. Some of these parcels look tiny. So, that's, you know, another interesting question. And, you know, frankly, we know, I mean, San Anselmo has found out to their chagrin as a lifelong San Anselmo resident that sometimes you don't necessarily want to have a dedicated or donated parcel because if it's, you know, like this and it's sliding, guess who gets the liability for that? So, those are some of the questions we might want to ask ourselves.
But some of these are already identified, I mean, we already, the ones on the maps, we already own, so...
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And untouched parcels have less liability than developed parcels.
Right.
And one last question on public domain. When I was reading through the code, I noticed that there's no, and I guess the assumption there is because that you could have a school or a town hall or whatever is a public domain. But I noticed that there were no building site requirements except height and design review. I thought that was kind of interesting, but I guess that goes with the zone.
Yeah, if you have a school and it's governed by the state architect and it's being proposed for school purposes, they can pretty much do whatever they want. So, sometimes it's good to not touch that because you just work yourself into a corner real quick.
Okay, anything else on this? Ready to move forward?
Yes. Pass that back.
So, minutes. Oops. Minutes from the August 15th meeting.
I had a couple of... On page two, Commissioner Rodriguez stated she opposed the continuance of the item because these were unpermitted improvements and should not have been given continuances, but rather they should move forward. Does that make sense that they should move forward, meaning we either deny or accept them?
Yeah, she didn't want to grant a continuance.
She didn't want to, okay. So, that is correct then. I was just checking that since she wasn't here. That's all the comments I had.
Any other corrections, comments?
I do have one correction, I think. I'm not sure how to word this, but on page three, second to the bottom, I guess, paragraph, second bullet, it says the blue is too bold and would not work for wayfinding. I think I said the white letters against the bold blue did not read well for wayfinding.
Do I have a motion?
I move approval of the minutes.
As corrected?
As corrected of the last meeting.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstain?
I abstain because I was absent.
So, we only have one meeting in October, right?
Correct.
Planning directors report? Anything left?
As I said, the idea of a workshop format for the Ponce de Villa site, and we'll be working on scheduling that. We will definitely make sure you don't get three meetings in a month. But, so, that's coming down the turnpike. Other than that, I don't believe I have anything, so...
So, Mimi, at the last meeting, you had asked for a report on the cannabis language introduced and the role of the planning commission with respect to the ordinance. Do you still have any questions or you're good?
Well, it sounds like the council's still working on that. So, I think when it's resolved, you guys are going to let us know what our role is, right?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, Commissioner comments? Any Commissioner comments?
I guess I just want to thank you guys again because all this work, it really shows that you guys have put a lot of effort in responding to the issues that we've raised in previous meetings. So, I just really appreciate it.
I want to echo that too and also thank the town council for that wonderful recognition they gave us and really appreciate that. That really, you know, drives on next year, so it's nice.
So, I have one comment. I want to thank the planning department, probably Linda, for uploading all the past minutes to the website. Okay, then I want to thank Kara for doing that. We're all up to date, so thank you.
We will tell her thank you for you.
That's it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're done. Thank you.